Okay, ladies and gentlemen. It's now 6:00 PM at the City of Castle Hills. This is a regular city council meeting. Tuesday, July the 11th, at 6:00 PM. I will call the City of Castle Hills' regular city council meeting to order at 6:00 PM and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. This evening, we have the privilege of Mr. Pinkston from the Castle Hills Baptist School will do our invocation. Well, Mr. Pinkston.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, I just want to thank you for just your good hand on our community and the blessing of just living in this greatest little community in South Texas. And I just pray that you would bless the mayor, the council midemers, and the city staff. You just put your hand on them. Your word declares in the Book of James, if anyone lacks wisdom to ask, you'd give it liberally. And I just pray you'd give them the mind of wisdom to just take care of us here in the city. I thank you for their sacrifice, the time they put in, and even sometimes the hard decisions they have to make. And I just pray that you would, they would just get honor and respect from us as citizens and that the working bond between citizens and our city government would just be like family. And we just dedicate this meeting to you and just ask for great things to come out of it. And we'll just give you the glory for it in advance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. I also have the special honor this evening to Catherine and Elizabeth McLean, along with Thomas, will come up and do our pledge of allegiance. These three young fine individuals are the children of one of our alderman person.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, three. I know where your mother got her voice now. Thank you very much. Okay. Acknowledgements and recognitions tonight. Our first recognition is going to be to Corporal Jose Davila, who was honored at a Mother's Against Drunk Driving, MADD, for six years consecutive for his efforts in DWI enforcement. Chief, would you like to comment on this, please? Johnny?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, city staff, and guests. We'd like to take a moment to recognize Corporal Davila for his efforts in deterrence of DWIs and DWI enforcement. Recently, he was awarded the Enforcement Award for driving while intoxicated violations, for arrests that he has made. Worth noting is that Corporal Davila, out of 33 suburbs in the greater San Antone area, is the only individual on that list. More aptly, Highway Patrol, San Antone DWI Task Force, Bear County DWI Task Force, and Corporal Davila have more than 20 arrests. And we're grateful for his services, as everyone here should be.
Sir? Corporal Davila, I would like to present this to you and let the public know that on behalf of the City of Castle Hills, Corporal Davila wrote 36 DWIs this year. And as Johnny was telling you, that's unprecedented around in the area. These are the gentlemen who keep us safe at night while we're sleeping. And I actually had lunch with a gentleman today, and he asked me if Corporal Davila was still working for us. And I'm not sure if he got DWI or not. I think it was just a plain speeding ticket, because I don't hang around anybody who would do anything like that. So with that said, I would like to present this to you. This is a plaque and an enforcement hero, and that's what you truly are, sir, and you and your other officers in helping keep our city safe 24/7.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Real quick, in addition to this being his sixth consecutive, this was his ninth overall.
Next on the agenda is something I really like to do, and that's introduce new employees. And this evening, we have two new firefighters. Eron Flores and Michael Kelly. Would you all mind coming to the front, please? Did I say your name right? Okay, good. Michael, pleasure to meet you, and thank you very much for joining our family, and that's just what it is. I don't know if many of you know, but I've been around here for a while and probably seen a lot of people retire recently, and it's a pleasure for you to come aboard. And thank you very much for joining our family. Dover, do you have anything to say?
Just very pleased. These guys are very hard workers. They've been a great asset and a great addition to the great guys that we already have here. I'm very proud to have them with us.
I wanted to know one thing. If you know me very long, you'll know that I always try to make the best of everything. How do you get along sleeping in the bunkhouse over there?
Oh, it's pretty good.
It is?
Pretty quiet.
Oh, good. Which one are you on?
On the first one. On the A shift.
A shift. Can you, sir?
B shift, sir.
B shift. I hear the C shift snore so much, it blows the top off the roof. Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. Also, while we're doing this, let's go ahead and congratulate the, like I said earlier, we have had a few retire here lately, and with that comes promotion. So I would like to announce, in the fire department personnel, we have Justin Garcia. Are you here this evening? Justin, come on up if you don't mind. Joe Hernandez.
He's not here.
Was he?
I'm sorry, he's not here.
Was he the one that we saw? Okay. David Kane is lieutenant now. The other two were captains. David Kane, lieutenant, come on up, David, and Jeremy Huffman as lieutenant. Gentlemen, I want to thank you on behalf of Castle Hills for staying with us and for being with us as long, as many of you know. You've all been here a while, and I really congratulate you on your promotion. Chief Dover speaks very highly of you, as I think everybody that has been there when you've made a call also knows that you're also a part of our family. So with that said, thank you very much, and we're looking forward to many years ahead. Thank you.
I just would like to say that these guys, they're, in my absence, they run the department. They run the station, they run the shifts, and these guys are probably what makes my job a lot easier. It's a difficult job, but they do it, and without them, I'd be lost. So I just, I can't tell you how much I appreciate having them with us and the job that they do for us.
Can I get Michael and Yedam to come back up? I want to get a picture with all you guys together.
By the way, when Yedam and Michael went to the fire department, they all were down in the stadium. One, two. One, two. That's it. I need Yedam to bring the furniture up. Yedam is right here, he's hot.
Let's go ahead and mention this. We were going to have a presentation, a very, very nice award for Chief Riedel, although Chief was out of town and couldn't be here tonight, so we're going to move that back to the August meeting. With that said, let's move on to citizens to be heard. And citizens to be heard are on non-agenda items. And since we have a huge list this evening, we would like to keep that narrowed down to three items. And actually, there's only one person, three minutes, I mean, Brother Dooling. So if you could come up, Brother William Dooling, and feel free to speak as long as you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. Brother William Dooling, 201, Gladiola Lane.
I just got kicked under the table, so go ahead.
And I actually do have two items, and I'll start with the second one first. On Sunday, I went to the spaghetti dinner for the 100 Club. I assume many of others did too, but it occurred to me while I was there, actually ate dinner with a policeman and his girlfriend, I think it was, and Judge Michael Mary and some other people, and I got thinking, seriously, two questions. Should the unthinkable ever happen to any of our personnel? Do we share in that, and if not, can we buy in as our way to? It's just a question that I think nobody ever wants to ask, but if it should ever happen, I think it's something we ought to think about, whether we do something on our own or separate. The second part of that is, I think we ought to have, I know individuals bring food and do different things for the fire department and the police, but I think we ought to have a community potluck, or whatever you want to call it, once a year for the police and fire and that sort of thing, where people could come, families and children and others, and actually honor and give recognition to our first responders. So that was my second question. The first one, I'd been waiting months to come up here. Missed it the last time. I know, it's my understanding, we have a new code compliance officer. I don't know who it is or haven't heard anything about it. But, so I held off a month. I just don't know what, you know, I've lived here 20 years, and I don't know what the problem with code compliance is, how it is we can't get compliance with our codes. I mean, it sounds like a pretty simple proposition, but in the area where I live, there's recently a couple things. Two vehicles were moved after one year of being in violation. I just think that's too long. Currently, there are people living in a trailer in a driveway. I assume they got permission for like summer visit or something, but no one ever knows this. How do you know? You can't go up and knock on the trailer door and say, "You got a permit here." But it's a problem. People see that trailer and people living in it, and it's like, well, how can this be? But there's inoperable vehicles. The other thing that just drives me insane, walking around with my dog, yeah, we had a lot of hail damage, a lot of roofing done. There are still advertising signs up for roofing companies six to nine months after they finish the job. I can't imagine how that's possible. And I can't imagine that we can't see it. There's also so many places with building materials and what I would consider trash, either in the front of the driveway or on the side of the house, just stacked up like it was some other place. So I just, I don't know, I don't know if the code compliance officer in driving around can't see it. I'd be happy to walk with he or her, him or her, the way I do. I see a lot of things, because I'm just walking along, guess being Snoopy, but you just walk in the streets, you see stuff. And maybe you don't see it when you're driving, but there is a lot of non-compliance with our codes. And in the past, I used to try and help Rita when she was wearing three hats, and code compliance was one of them. But we now have, as I understand, somebody being paid a full-time salary. We've increased, you know, staffing. Well, that's fine. But I don't think citizens should have to rat out other citizens when we're paying somebody to do it. It would be different if we weren't, then I guess you would follow up with, you know, suggestions or something like that. But I just wish we could get better compliance, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Kurt, did you want to get with Brother Dooling on, I am aware of a couple of the issues that he, since we can't address him directly at this point, would you like to get with him and explain a couple of the situations?
I'll get with Brother Dooling. I just would like to say that code compliance is not an easy item to tackle, but we've got a new code compliance officer on the staff, and he's been making great gains in that department. He's our old code compliance officer, Louis Amarone, who's rejoined us, and we're thrilled to have him back. He came back from Balcony Heights, and he has really been making a difference in our city. He's, but he can't do it all in one very short period of time. And anybody that, you can call in anytime. I know nobody wants to rat out their neighbors, but we may not see, that one code compliance officer may not see people living in a trailer behind someone's house, but I could give you-
Sir, it's not behind the house. It's in the driveway and very visible.
So all I need is the address, Brother Dooling, and we'll take care of that. So again, I don't want to get in a dialogue with Brother Dooling, but what I want to say is, our code compliance officer has been making great progress. We're willing to, anybody calls something in, we're willing to follow up on it. And he's been doing a fantastic job around the city. I can give you a list as long as I have. Okay.
All right, you guys. Okay. Let's, Kurt, why don't you get with Brother Dooling, when you two can get your schedules together, and let's visit on that. And then also, what we may want to do on our website, you know, what I've run across lately is, as you can imagine, I get a ton of phone calls from 24/7, believe it or not. And, you know, nobody, as Brother Dooling stated, nobody likes to be a rat or anything like that. But we also have a, we also have a way that we get things done, and when anybody puts anything in writing, it usually gets done. So if, we have forms that can be filled out, if you happen to see it, you're not going to be the one that actually files a charge or anything like that, but it also brings to mind and puts into writing what's going on. And Brother Dooling, I thank you for your thoughts on that, but I also want to point out that so many times, I'll get a call, somebody's dog's barking, or somebody's walking around without a bag in their hand to take care of what their dog leaves and all this kind of stuff. Please, please don't be afraid to come in and fill out the form. We can't be everywhere. We can't be everywhere. If we get it in writing, then we have a way to move forward. If not, what we do is we end up, and I can't address you, Brother Dooling, you know that, in citizens to be heard.
But you are.
I am not addressing you, sir. I'm addressing the situation.
But you, both of you have missed my point. There are a lot of citizens, several sitting right around here, who say you are both dead wrong.
Well, then, what I would do is suggest, what I would suggest is, we get in here and fill out forms, okay, and put it in writing, so we can address it to the judge.
Forget the judge. You have a code-
I don't forget the judge, sir. That's the law of the land.
You have a code compliance officer, and it's not being done. Why should I have to do that when we're paying somebody to do it?
You shouldn't do it.
That's right.
I'll follow up with Brother Dooling.
Thank you. Okay. As we walk through citizens to be heard, let's go to item four. Consider the approval, this is going to be a consent agenda item. It's considered the approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on June the 13th, 2017. Consider approval of the June 17 Treasury Report. Consider approval of the budget workshop schedule. Do I have anybody who wants to pull an item, please? Frank? John? Anyone else? Let's just open the whole thing. Consider the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting on June the 13th. Anyone?
On page two, section F, it needs to be changed to council members McLean and Scott. Wanted to recognize Mayor Howell, misspelling, and we wrote him a limerick. Those corrections need to be made under section F. Thank you.
There's also another correction that needs to be made to the minutes. On page five, under item 10, motion was made by Councilmember McLean and seconded by Councilmember Scott, not motion made by Scott and seconded by Scott. That's right towards the tail end of number 10. And then another one, to check a spelling of a name in section 15 for Walter Bueller. I think the vowels are backwards. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else on item A? Item B? Yes, sir.
We just got part of the page, but we're also missing the page that lists the assets that we have. If you have to carry your-
That's a first. We're also missing the page that doesn't list the assets that we have and when they're due, and the interest we've received during the time period. It's just a one-page thing that's usually in here.
Kurt, can you get-
We'll get with Suzanne and get those pushed out. We'll send them out via email. So the one page, the one page that Councilman Gregory's mentioning there, we'll send that out.
Yeah, okay. All right. Consider the annual budget workshop schedule. Is that something you're just going to, we all got here?
It's on the consent agenda. I forwarded it to council with the last couple of weekly activity reports. I'm willing to discuss any piece or portion of that. There is an updated copy at your position. It's changing a little here and there as the departmental budget meetings go through and as we get inputs from various people on dates, but it's just, and it will continue probably to change here and there. The main thing that I want council to realize is the dates that are highlighted in yellow are workshops and our public hearings, so I want to make sure that those are good on your, on your personal schedules, so make sure we've got you there for those very important engagements.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question to ask of the city manager. The date of final tax rate calculation comes before the first budget workshop. Is this set by statute or by the city? It seems to me we've got the cart before the horse.
This is the final tax rate from Bear County.
So this is what, how Bear County sets it out for us to follow?
This is Bear County will establish their tax rate that will factor into our budget. Yes, sir. So, and then we, we will, as a point of departure, we will start with the previous tax rate and build the budget based on that, Councilman, unless council-
That's what I wanted to do. Thank you.
And then council will determine whether or not that's acceptable or not.
Mr. Vandewali, do these have to be separate from a regularly called city council meeting, or since they're, this is my first budget cycle, so?
I don't think that they have to be, but I think it's prudent to do so, just because you don't want to mix the two. They can be lengthy sessions, and you combine them on top of a council session, which can be a lengthy session. So the practice in the past, from my understanding, is to be established separate dates to give them the attention that they're due and be able to work through the budget issues and hear public comments on the budget issues as well versus mingling that all together. It would probably stretch these-
Right, there will be times also that we'll have to, and what I would suggest we do, Minerva, is we also go ahead and figure out a way to put this on the website, so people will be able to access that. And I realize it's an evolving calendar. This, as you can imagine, trying to get five people together and then get the, you know, attorney together and everything, it's not an easy job to do, but I think if we get, put some kind of dates out there for the public to know, in case they would like to attend some of these, I know that several members of public have in the past. Also, there will be somewhere in here, I know, not town hall meetings, but meetings where we have to bring the budget forward to the public, so. Okay. Any other questions on item C, the workshop schedule? Sure.
Are all of these meetings beginning at 5:00 PM? There's only a time listed on the first meeting, July 27th. Are they all starting at 5:00 PM? Will they all begin the evening?
That's the intent, ma'am.
That's something we'll probably get into a discussion when we get into this second council meeting that we're going to propose during the month, which may segue into a conversation regarding how we can, how we can blend some of these meetings, if, and depending on which, which one they are and which topics they are, that's, that's part of moving the schedule forward. You get what I mean? Okay, good. Yes?
You are pulling the Treasury report from the consent, right?
It has been, it has been pulled.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're getting ready to vote on it. What we'll do, I guess, is, since, since we have some changes on each one, we had the changes on the minutes. Let me have a motion for the changes on that, please, on item A.
I move that we adopt the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Second?
Second it.
All in favor? Thank you. It is unanimous. We're moving into consider the Treasury's report. The Treasury's report has been pulled. When are we going to address that?
What is your question, when we're going to address it?
Right. Did you have some questions on it?
I haven't looked at it. It just came up. It was sitting on the desk when I got here, so I would, I'm going to say we'll have to look at for next meeting, is my opinion.
And we need the missing page.
We'll add the missing page. We'll get that to you beforehand, and then we'll send that to you electronically, and we can put it on the next month's meeting.
Okay, let's do that on the next meeting. Consider approval of the budget workshop schedule as written, and also to go ahead and put it on the website by the city secretary. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Paul. We have a second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and I think we're done with that. We're going to move on to the regular agenda. Item five is consider an act upon hiring a message board service in compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act requirements to facilitate open communication between city council and selected members of city staff. This is something relatively new that the state has, has adopted, and Ms. McLean, Ms. Scott, I believe, is going to explain with, with social media these days and everything that's involved with that, breaking this, anyway, she's going to go ahead and explain how we would like to go ahead and move this forward, so council members can discuss without having a quorum. Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to cover the fact that this is legally approved by the state of Texas. It is under Title V of Open Government under Ethics subtitle A, Open Government. It's in chapter 551, under Open Meetings. If you go down to section 551 dot 006, under Written Electronic Communications Accessible to the Public, it states that A, a communication or exchange of information between members of a governmental body- of information between members of a governmental body about public business or public policy over which the governmental body has supervision or control does not constitute a meeting or deliberation for purposes of this chapter if, one, the communication is in writing; two, the writing is posted to an online message board or similar internet application that is viewable and searchable by the public; and three, the communication is displayed in real time and displayed on the online message board or similar internet application for no less than thirty days after the communication is first posted; B, a government body may have no more than one online message board or similar internet application to be used for the purposes described in subsection A. The online message board or similar internet application must be owned or controlled by the governmental body predominantly displayed on the government's body's primary internet webpage with no more than one click away from the government's body's primary internet webpage. Under C, the online message board or similar internet application described in subsection A may only be used by members of the governmental body or staff members of the governmental body who have received specific authorization from a member of the government body. In the event that a staff member posts a communication to the online message board or similar internet application, the name and title of the staff member must be posted along with the communication. Section D, if a governmental body removes the online message board or similar internet application, a communication that has been posting for at least thirty days, the governmental body shall maintain the posting for a period of six years. This communication is public information and must be disclosed in accordance with chapter five fifty-two. E, the governmental body may not vote or take any action that is required to be taken at a meeting under this chapter of the governmental body by posting a communication to the online message board or similar internet application. In no event shall a communication or posting to the online message board or similar internet application be construed to be any action or act of the governmental body. So, it is, um, legal in the state of Texas for the city of Castle Hills to create an online message board for the council members to be able to discuss city issues and, um, certain city employees can also be added to that. It would be closed in the sense that the only people could communicate or actually type and add things onto the board would be the council, the mayor, and those approved, um, to be on the board, although it's open to the public. So, the public at any time can view these communications between council members and it really leads to a lot of open transparency in the governmental system, so that way, if any discussion is going on, um, any citizen at any time can go and look and see, you know, what's, what's being, um, talked about by the council through the message board. Um, I've researched quite a few different options. Um, so, typically, there is a, a charge for these, um, to, to put a message board up and running. Um, they run anywhere from ten to fifty dollars a month. That would be something that would need to be addressed with our current I.T. department and looking into which ones would be the, the most applicable. But personally, I, I think they are a wonderful idea because it gives the community and the citizens a chance to really see what the council is, is discussing when we're not here in meeting. So, um, it, it is legal to do and, um, like I said, it offers that sense of transparency. Thank you.
Uh, before we, before we go into, first of all, let's get a motion and a second on the table, then we'll go into discussion. I have a question for you. Do I have a motion for this item, please? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So, we have a motion by, uh, Ms. McLinn and we have a second by Mr. Trevino. Um, let's start on the left. Mr. Trevino, did you have any questions? Since this is new, it's, uh, there's, there's a lot of twists and turns in the, in this law and I want to make sure everybody is aware of it. There are cities across the state already doing this. Uh, it's also, uh, cut down a lot on time. It cuts down a lot on communication. Uh, you do have to be pretty computer savvy in order to make it work. Uh, if you're not computer savvy, I'm sure you can go to the local library and they'll, they'll open it up for you.
Yes, sir. So, there's a T.M.L. posting stating, it's a S.V. twelve ninety-seven, that basically says that Facebook, which is a free service, would, by definition, should be allowable as a medium for the service. Uh, that being said, one of my concerns is the fact that maybe some of our residents who are not technologically savvy wouldn't be able to access this information. While I understand it's legal, my concern would be the residents, which I would implore y'all to reach out to us if you think that that would be a hindrance, that you wouldn't be able to access the information.
Thank you. Did you have anything to say, other than what you've already said?
I think I've covered everything.
I'm sure that there'll be questions. Ms. McLinn, did you have anything to add to this?
Um, I really like the idea of this. Um, what it gives the citizens the opportunity to do is to see some of the reasoning behind what council is thinking about. Um, as the open meetings stands now, I could talk with Mrs. Scott all day long about having a second council meeting, but if I go and talk to another council member about that issue, I violated the Open Meetings Act. So, on agenda item tonight, for instance, number eight, where we're talking about adding a second city council meeting, we could have had a discussion on an open meet, on an open message board, about what time on a Tuesday would be good for us instead of having to have that discussion up here on the dais tonight. So, I feel like it, um, helps us communicate better and get to know what the other council members are thinking. It allows the citizens to understand a little bit more about what we're doing and why we're doing things rather than the few words that you get to hear while we're sitting up here.
Thank you, Ms. McLinn. Mr. Paul, do you have any questions on this, please?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Um, I realize this is new from the state and in regards to Councilman Trevino's remarks, because a few of us are, may not be as literate, doesn't mean we should keep it from the others who are. That's my opinion. Um, I'm all for transparency, uh, anybody that, you know, I don't have anything to hide up here, uh, you know, if we have discussion, but as I understand it, though, the public cannot input and cannot, they can just see what's going back and forth and so, uh, on a particular subject, so, you know, it, it's open and, uh, you know, I don't have a problem with letting people know what's going on.
I think, Paul, Frank, one thing I want to point out is, it shouldn't be taken as it's something that is, is, uh, you don't have a pro, I mean, there's not a problem with the public not knowing. Everything still has to come before council.
Correct.
Okay, but that doesn't mean, you know as well as I do, that you, Douglas, and, uh, Amy, we can't, we can't talk about something in advance without, uh, being in violation of the open meetings law.
Well, I think Mrs. McLinn made a very good example of how it could be used, the discussion about the, the previous, having additional meeting time factors, stuff like that, what fits, what doesn't fit. It may not make any difference to half the people, but it's just another avenue of letting people see what we're thinking, what's going. That's my thought.
Douglas?
Yeah, I have two questions of the city attorney. Who monitors, monitors the online message board?
I'm not sure, but, uh, I would suspect that everybody that looks at it, uh, has the opportunity to complain, uh, about its violation if that happens.
Who, if there is a violation, you know, to the city, is the city to any degree liable for not catching the violation or is it liable because there is a violation?
Well, subject to something in the law that addresses that, I would assume not. I mean, the city itself is not responsible for enforcing the Open Meetings Act, period, uh, although any, uh, uh, member of the public or official of the city can complain to the DA's office about violations because that's the entity that enforces it.
Reason I ask that, we had an instance about ten or fifteen years ago in a newsletter. Uh, the city secretary published a long column in which she was all in favor of something to do with, I forget what it was, uh, something that was going to be voted on, and she was brought forth and found in violation of the O.D., Open Meetings Act and fined, and so was the then-sitting mayor because the mayor allowed it to be posted in a city publication. You remember who, that was, uh, Joyce and...
Right, but that...
And I just wondered if...
There's an answer to that.
If there is a violation, is the mayor dragged in on it because he hasn't monitored this thing adequately?
I, I doubt that very seriously. I think it's going to be just like the Open Meetings Act right now. It's not the responsibility of any of you all to enforce the law. Uh, you, you can file complaints just like anybody else, but I don't think y'all are responsible for enforcement. And, uh, Marietta, I don't know, uh, was there anything in that law that, that you noticed that talked about enforcement that was any different than the act in general?
Um, no, it just stated clearly that it was acceptable because it is covered under open meeting because anything that we state is available to be read by the public.
Okay.
So, it, it was, it was, it seems pretty clear, clear that it would be difficult to violate the Open Meeting Act since everyone has access to everything that's put up on the board. You can't remove things from the board and everything that is posted has to be kept either in, online or in a, uh, actually printed format for six years after it's posted.
Okay. Um, Douglas, I, I'll double-check the law and make sure there's not a different answer to your question than what we've discussed here, although I will say, I have noticed over, uh, the time of my life that people are very clever about figuring out ways to get around stuff and I, I would never guarantee that there is some, not some way to violate this law, just like any other law.
Sure, go ahead, Amy.
To me, what it seems like is that once you adopt a message board as a city, that it's a permanent open meeting notice, that if you have a message board, that your council is discussing things, that it's a constant open meeting that's there twenty-four hours a day, um, as long as there are comments being made on it and it's closed to any sort of discussion and you're not allowed to take any action. That still has to be ratified here at an open meeting, so...
What's the discussion?
To me, it seems like a good way to move, um, some things along.
Yeah, well, it's, it's like a continuous meeting, which is great, just no action.
Well, I'm a little confused here. Councilwoman, you said it's closed to discussion.
Right.
If it's closed to discussion, how do you have a back and forth?
Statements.
It's closed to, it's not closed to discussion. It's an open discussion among all the council members and the mayor and any city employees that we authorize to be on it. So, we could choose to have Chief Davis, we could have Chief Dover, we could have the city manager, the city secretary, we could have the city attorney, well, city attorney maybe, um, or none of those. It could just be the five aldermen and the mayor of the city and its discussions, you know, we could have a task list. You go and research this, you go research this, but as of right now, we have to sit up here and have that discussion in front of everybody, which is a really inefficient use of time where we're up here when we could be having that discussion on an open message board, um, about procedural things or tasks that we're working on.
Well, that raises at least one or two questions to me. How is a citizen able to access this seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day?
Yes.
I can answer that, yes, sir.
So, they can access it. Uh, who decides who has the ability to talk on it?
It's...
Is it by council vote by majority? No?
Go ahead, Marietta. What happens in this situation?
It says that, that governmental, the governmental body, which would be the city council, or staff members of the governmental body who have received specific authorization from a member of the governmental body. So, it would be, uh, the city council would have to approve any additional city staff that have, um, the ability to, um, add to the message board or write on the message board.
It's, Douglas, it's, in, in layman's terms, all it is, is an electronic stage. That's all it is. It's a platform. It's exactly like you and we're, we're doing up here. It's public, anybody can get into it and watch, uh, what's going on with the statements. Now, personally, if I was a council person, I wouldn't say I'm in favor of something on that message, message board. What I would say is it would be a question and answer type thing and actually, to me, it, it, uh, being in favor of it, what it, what it does is it doesn't, you, you wouldn't know if I typed in, Douglas, how do you feel about the open message board that the state of Texas is allowing people to do? Or I could say, you know, Douglas, what do you feel about that message board that the state of Texas is about to do? You say it in the inflection of your voice out, up here, obviously, I'm for it, okay? I put it in writing on an email on a platform, an electronic platform, you don't know what I think about it. So, that's how you stay away from the Open Meetings Act and yes, there, there are pitfalls in it. If Frank was to get on there and go, uh, and I'll give you a good example of this, it's happened recently to us, okay? Nextdoor is an electronic platform and we all know what happened recently with Nextdoor.
Because I don't work at Nextdoor that often, I don't know.
Well, why don't you go out and read it? So, respectfully, go to Nextdoor and find out. So, with, with that said, we, you know, you've, you've set a platform there. If every single one of us got on that platform and we said, well, you know, I'm, I'm not for that and I'm not for that, we've already made the decision up there and we're in violation of the act, is what we are. Thank God, not anybody, not a lot of people got on there and expressed their opinion regarding any of the issues that are on Nextdoor. Because that is an electronic platform.
That raises a question, Mr. Brennan. If you log on and you see the participation of a conversation, are you a participant in the conversation because you've logged on?
No.
Legally?
Um, I don't know the answer to that. I haven't figured that one out. In other words, uh, if you just silently read everything on there or listened to everything on, but you didn't contribute anything, uh, it seemed to me you would be a participant because you're...
I think so.
How do they know you logged on?
The way the statute has written it, it excludes the, the people that are just observing the conversation. If you, if you listen to what Marietta read from the statute, it makes it clear that it, that they're distinguishing that, that you're not a participant in the conversation, but you have access to what's going on. The people sitting in the audience during a city council meeting can't talk whenever they want to, so it's the same thing with the message board. They have access to, have more access to us.
You need to do more research on it, Mr. Brennan.
Yeah, yeah, I need to check that one. Uh, I, I, you asked the question, how does somebody know whether you logged on? I thought there was a way that that could be determined.
Yeah, but it doesn't tell you whether you're in the room or not. In other words, if I'm, if, uh, let's, let's use Nextdoor as a, as an example. It's the same thing. It's an electronic platform. I could be sitting there watching what, uh, Wayne Carter says, but he doesn't know I'm watching what he says.
Well...
If I get on there and say, Wayne, I sure didn't like what you said and I'm for this and Frank gets on there and, and Amy gets on there and says the same thing, we violated the Open Meetings Act and can't bring anything up regarding on what Wayne is talking about.
Okay.
I disagree.
Let's not get tangled up in the, the other, this is a platform and a, a procedure and a process that's been developed by the state and, uh, it, it looks to me like probably ninety percent of the questions are answered. If there's an unanswered question about whether you can just watch and not say anything and their question then is, did you participate, uh, either that's going to, that's been resolved in the law or it will be resolved through some opinion.
Uh, sir, I went ahead and looked at the city of Austin. They have a council message board and I was able to view it. No one knew I was viewing it. I didn't have to log in to view it or anything like that. And so, depending on the type of message board and how you set it up, you may be able to see who's online at a time and logged in and looking at something, or you can set the message board up in such a way that you don't know who is currently logged in or has seen it.
Well, then that, that sounds like it becomes part of the process of, of actually implementing this and, you know, contracting with somebody to do it and what the, what the arrangements are going to be.
I'd like a written opinion on that from you, if you don't mind.
No, I'm happy to.
As I can see, this is a, unless you're computer savvy, as the mayor is very computer savvy and Mrs. Scott and McLinn are very savvy, I'm not and I'd hate to put my foot in my mouth and be violation of something. Innocently getting on this thing and making a comment and it's, or asking a question or something, I want to know exactly what I can and can't do.
I don't think that the message board prohibits you from having an opinion on a subject. We have opinions all day long up here. Um, what it prohibits you from doing is taking action, so we couldn't say, how do you vote, Mr. Trevino? How do you vote, Mrs. Scott? How do you vote, Mr. Gregory? How do you vote, Mr. Paul? And, and take a vote. You cannot take a vote. You could express opinions all day long and you can discuss stuff, but you cannot take action on it.
That's true.
And that's the prohibited, um, that's where the authority stops on the message board.
Because I could say, Alderman McLinn, I don't think I agree with you on what you just stated in your previous message. Have you considered A, B, C, and D? Maybe you should do some more research into X, Y, and Z or... Maybe you should do some more research into X, Y, and Z or... So, just because I expressed an opinion that I don't agree with what she's currently saying doesn't mean I can't change my mind. She may not change her mind because we do up here in the dais all the time. We have those conversations where, you know, "I disagree with what you're saying, tell me more," or "I agree with what you're saying." So, thank you, sir.
And really, you know, until you actually cast your vote in a legal forum right here, no matter what you said before, you might have said 10 times, "Well, I'm going to vote for that proposition," and you get up here and you can vote against it. So, really, until your official vote is taken, what you say on there doesn't really matter particularly, you know? It's just a discussion.
Being a page at the Capitol, I think that, like I was, I think you understand that rule. What happens is, how many times are representatives not even anywhere around when their vote is cast? Anybody know that? A lot. And who's placing that vote? The page with the key. That's what happens. What happens is the record. The record is what counts. It doesn't matter what is said. So, it saves time, it saves, anyway, it's up to council.
Mr. Brennan, do you, I heard your remark that maybe we should do a little bit more looking into this from the standpoint of making sure there's no trouble for council for doing these things. Is that correct?
No, I don't really think that. You know, this is a lawful procedure that the state has come up with or planned, and it sounds to me like a good plan. I think y'all ought to move forward with authorization for the staff to look into and seek proposals from entities that provide this service to do it. And you all will have another option or opportunity, I'm sure, to review proposals and make a selection that would include all the details, but no, I don't think there's any need to hold back on this if you like the idea of the open discussion.
Do you think we ought to amend the initial thing to say, look into people who actually do this proposal or go ahead and pass it as a proposal and then wait to engage it until we have the...
I would say the motion is fine. It, you know, it has to go through the staff process anyway, no matter, if you all vote to approve it, that's a vote on principle of you want to implement this program and the staff's going to have to work out the details and probably come back to y'all with the plan that you can review in detail.
In the meantime, I would suggest, and this isn't being cold or anything like that, if you're not, if you're not really sure about it or you're not really, then you would probably do things the way that we always have done it and not be on there.
Well, until we actually have the program in place, you can't...
Nobody would be on there.
You're not in there until it's finally approved. I mean, until the details and the selection is finally made.
I think that once people get into it and actually look at it, they'll realize we're, in a lot of cases, we're doing it already in open forum, Facebook, Nextdoor.
I hate to hear that. Let's not say that.
No, we're not doing that, Mayor. We are very, very careful to make sure that two of us do not comment on any thread on Nextdoor because if we get past the two, then we've got an Open Meetings Act. So, we are very conscious about if two people are one place, everybody else is somewhere else. And I think that this would help us communicate and actually get to understand what we're all thinking better than, because we are very conscious about that.
And one other thing, we would definitely get quick citizen feedback, which I think is important.
No kidding.
Because a lot of times, we don't get citizen feedback until we're here and not everyone comes to the meetings, not everyone sees, and it may be encouraging people to get out and come to these meetings more because they have something to say.
I agree with you 100%. I mean, that's where a lot of these rumors get started about so-and-so and so-and-so and so-and-so believe this and it's already a said, done deal. And that's what this thing is set up for, to counteract that sort of thinking. Okay, so, we have a motion on the table from Ms. McGlynn. We have a second for Mr. Trevino. Does anybody have any other questions regarding Douglas?
Should we limit the amount we're going to spend this? We're up to $50 a month or less.
Say that again.
Should we limit how much it says to hire a message board service? We don't know how much, but could we say, could we up to $50 a month in terms of cost?
I'll certainly agree with that.
I wouldn't have a problem because it's free, you know? You've set up Dropbox, it's free.
So, my amendment would be to add, consider act upon hiring a message board service provider with a cost of no more than $50 a month in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, et cetera, et cetera.
Is that a meeting, is that an amendment to the original?
That's an amendment to the motion.
So, you're amending the...
I'm just adding up to $50 a month.
Up to $50 a month. So, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment or do we have to go back through the whole thing? Second on the amendment, please?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor on the amendment? It is unanimous, thank you. Let's go back to the original, please. The original was, Minerva, you want to read that out, please? If you could figure it out? I don't know if I could. No, sorry.
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, Mayor, sorry about that. I just wanted to pull this up so that the folks that are here with us have a graphic that they can look at. We've had, must be my electric personality, I'm not sure. We've had several meetings of a traffic committee, the mayoral-appointed traffic committee with regards to traffic on North Winston, South Winston Lane, Northwest Military Highway, some of the neighborhood streets back behind the First Baptist Church and the future basis lease location there of the buildings from the First Baptist Church. So, this ordinance in particular has to do with North Winston. And you can see on the diagram that's before you that the intended locations of signs that would say, "No parking, no stopping, standing, or parking," I think is the exact verbiage of them. The concern here is that parents will park along the side of North Winston Lane when their kids are in school and encourage them to cut across Northwest Military when they're coming to and from the basis school. So, this is a way to help safeguard those kids so that their parents don't have that option to park along there. By passing the ordinance, it would make it enforceable so that if there are people parked there, stopped there and standing, and the reason standing is in there is because that's basically sitting there waiting, lingering, pulled off on the side of the road, stopping, opening the door, unloading and loading kids without actually sitting there and parking. Now, for this piece of the equation, this takes care of two, this ordinance would take care of two issues, which is the school pedestrians, as well as, it's been brought to our attention that we have large trucks that park there in the evenings, 18-wheelers, that people that live in one of the neighborhoods, probably across the other side of Lock Hill-Selma, park their trucks and leave them parked there overnight along the street. So, these signs would be in place. There is no restriction on time of day or day of week. They're 24/7 signs that would prevent parking up and down those streets. So, you should have an amended ordinance. We sent out the drafts with the council packets, but Ms. Gonzalez, our city secretary, has passed out the amended ordinances and you've got them there in front of you and you can read those. I don't think I need to read them for you. But basically, what that does, it would put in place these no parking signs along North Winston Lane.
Chief, did you have any comments or anything you want to make along with, you're good? Mr. Dover?
Thank you. Okay, let's get a motion on the table and then let's get a second and then we'll go into the discussion. Do I have a motion for this item, please?
I moved.
Second, motion by Mr. Trevino, second by Mr. Paul. Douglas, let's start with you this time, okay?
Yeah. Is this ordinance added school days only? It should have school hours only.
You're on the next...
Example, what if somebody in the evening who lives on that street has a party?
So, Councilman, I think you're on Agenda Item 7. I believe this is Agenda Item 6, which is for North Winston Lane, which is, doesn't have the school, shouldn't have the school days only verbiage on it. So, you should have two different copies, one that says school days only, that will be the one for South Winston, the next Agenda item.
Yes. Well, this came in number 6.
While they're deciding that, Quentin, I noticed you came in late and didn't get to see the sign-up sheet. Would you like to sign up for either one of these items on 6 or 7?
Well...
Both of them? Yes, sir, thank you.
Am that's correct? Well, I'm correct. It says school days only in 11A. And my point is, what do you do if somebody has a party on that street in the evening and they can't park? You can't park on the street because it's a school day and they have nothing to do with the school.
There's no home on that party.
So, again, I think, actually, I think the title is the wrong, is the thing that's wrong on these two ordinances. I think we've got 11A on the one that's for 11B.
I'm looking at 11A and it says, "As amended by prohibiting stopping, standing, or parking on school days only."
Sure. Again, Councilman, if you'll just bear with me for a second, we can go change this real fast if we want to, but we've got the wrong ordinance title at the top of the wrong page. So, that is really 11 Bravo that you're looking at. But, so, there was a little bit of a mix-up when we drafted this up and that's completely my fault. So, I would say if we could just amend what you're looking at and turn the A to a B and the B to an A at the top of those ordinances and then re-engage on the discussion. Because right now, we're talking, 11A would be for North Winston, is what we're trying, was what the intent was.
Thank you.
And that's Agenda Item 6.
Council, y'all understand that?
Yes, sir.
Are we good?
Sorry about that.
Douglas? Go ahead. Are you done? Or you want to come back, Douglas? Well, you have a chance to...
Doesn't this have the same effect? You're prohibiting parking on both sides of North Winston Lane at non-driveway locations. Period.
There's no residences along that stretch of North Winston Lane. It's businesses on the north side of the street or the northwest side of the street on North Winston there, and then the other side is just an open lot. It's a vacant lot that's a commercial...
Across Northwest Military, Douglas.
It's on the east side of Northwest Military.
Got you. All right, thank you.
So, we'll get to South Winston on the next one, Councilman.
Mr. Paul, do you have any questions or no? Okay, Ms. McGlynn, do you have any comments? Ms. Scott? Mr. Trevino, I'm sure you've got something to say.
No, sir. Just the recommendation of the committee to propose this based on the fact that we're concerned that people may, as Mr. Vandewalle said, park their cars and encourage their kids to walk across when there's not an actual crosswalk there.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Yeah, that was a big, that was a big deal when we were talking about this because we can get, I'm not going to call it, we can get the portion of Winston Lane that is in front of the school taken care of, but we could, as the committee pointed out, see cars backed up all the way to Lock Hill-Selma, around the corner there and kids coming across Military Highway. Well, that in itself would not be a good thing. So, I think since everybody's had on council their view, Quentin, did you, since you signed up for the number 6, did you have any questions?
I agree with what Mr. Trevino said. He's right on par.
Thank you very much. Okay. With that said, let's go ahead and move Item 6 forward. So, we have the motion and the second, all in favor?
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Just for writing up this ordinance correctly, I had originally written it on South Winston, it was no standing, stopping, or parking. On North Winston, it was no parking because I didn't understand that there was a standing or stopping issue on North Winston. So, are we doing parking-only limitation on North? Are we doing standing, stopping, or parking?
All this, all this motion said was, "Consider the approval of ordinance number 20160711A, adding no parking signs on both sides of North Winston Lane."
Okay, then I'm...
I think where the confusion came in was the backup paperwork and then he settled that and got it made, but as far as the law is concerned, it was written right.
Well, all right, city managers tell me it's no standing, stopping, or parking, not just no parking, which, as long as you're right.
No parking is what the thing says.
It's what the Agenda item says, but it refers to the ordinance and the ordinance says no stopping, standing, and parking. And the reason for that is this. If you could have kids run across the street over there, stand there, then their parents pull up and they climb in the car if it's just no parking. If you have no stopping, standing, or parking, you can't do loading and unloading and you can't have kids standing along the road there waiting for their parents to come to come up.
Would someone please withdraw the motion and the second will redo it?
I'll withdraw the motion because the, if we change ordinance 11B to read 11A, it only says prohibiting parking, so we need to amend it to add stopping, standing, or parking.
Okay. So it seems to me that the motion would be, your motion is withdrawn, is the second withdrawn?
I'll withdraw. Ms. McLenn, did you get a new copy that was placed on the dice? Okay. It does have the stopping, standing and parking.
For North or South Winston?
Uh, North Winston. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the intent with the agenda item was just to capture the, was, was to capture the topic. The ordinance is the one that I believe, Mr. Brennan carries the meat, you're approving the ordinance that would then cover the no parking, stopping or standing.
Well, according to what you've said, you've mislabeled this ordinance eleven D and you says is eleven A. So the revised eleven A has the stop, stopping, standing or parking in the ordinance. So I don't know exactly what the discussion is all about. If, if the correction of, of eleven D is eleven A.
Actually, it's not. There's a, there's a problem with the actual language of the ordinance. If you look, the title says stopping, standing, parking. The whereas, the city council says stopping, standing and parking. But if you look down where it says further ordained, it only says prohibiting parking on both sides of North Winston. And it should be prohibiting stopping, standing or parking on both sides of North Winston. So that needs to be amended.
Okay.
Yeah, if that's the intention, that's great. That's, that's all I need to know.
That's the intention. So all we need to do is add that verbiage. Hang on, Quentin, we'll come back, okay? I saw you raise your hand. Okay, with that said, we've had a motion withdrawn from Ms. McLenn and I believe it was Mr. Trevino. The seconded that, we're going to rephrase it and say, consider the original, consider approval of the ordinance number two oh one seven oh seven eleven A, adding parking signs and no standing?
It would say prohibiting stopping, standing and parking on both sides. Yeah.
Prohibiting parking, standing. And what else?
Stopping, standing and parking.
Stopping, standing and parking on both sides of North Winston Lane. Do we have a motion? Okay, thank you, Frank.
Second.
Thank you. We got one from Mr. Trevino, that's Frank and Trevino. Okay, do we need to go into any more discussion regarding that? Quinn, you raised your hand, you okay? Thank you. All right. Now, we're finally in the saddle. Okay, with that said, we had that as read on item C. We have it adjusted, all in favor? Thank you, it is unanimous?
Thank you, mayor.
All right, let's move on to seven. As consider the approval of ordinance number two oh one seven oh seven eleven B, adding no parking signs on both sides of Winston Lane. Do we need to add the standing and all that? Okay, go ahead, will you read that off to me, please?
No, the language is in there on this one. The language is correct.
Yeah, that's already in there now.
Okay, good. So we're in item number seven, consider the approval of ordinance number two oh one seven oh seven eleven B, adding no parking signs on both sides of South Winston Lane. Kurt?
Okay. For this particular one, this, this required a little more debate and discussion with the traffic committee. And we've got several of the members here to include the Mendoza's who came to our last traffic committee meeting who live down on the end of the street. Mr. Carter was with us, Mr. Baker was with us, Ms. Judy Crawford, Ms. Amanda Mills. So we've had three meetings of the traffic committee meeting. So the, the slide that you've got in front of you now indicates where the, and you've got it in your council packets as well, indicates where the no parking, no stopping, standing or parking signs would go. And in addition to that, there are two locations across from the exits from the church parking lot that say no left turn. So this would cover those, those signs. In fact, that was passed at the last council meeting if I remember correctly. So we're just talking about the no stopping, standing or parking signs at this one. But those no left turn signs are indicated on the diagram as well.
Thank you.
This is where Councilman Gregory had a question regarding the school days only. That was, again, that was through discussion with, with the traffic committee. And that was the verbiage that they selected to bring before council.
Thank you. Douglas, let's start with you on any discussion on this, okay?
Comments? If I want to go see Mr. Carter or Mr. Mendoza, right now I park next to their mailbox. I can only now park in their driveway?
On school days, that's correct, councilman.
What if they have a, what if the, what if anybody who lives on that street wants to have a party in the evening?
There's multiple options there in my mind. The first option is you park in the driveway. If you get too many people, you can't park in the driveway. The second option is you could park across the street in the church parking lot. People park over there routinely. And the third option is if you call our dispatch desk and let them know what's going on and let them know you're a resident, more than likely, I can't necessarily speak for the officer on patrol or for the police chief, but they're not going to go and write tickets to somebody that's having a Super Bowl party on a Sunday. Well, that's not a school day anyway. So, so if it's on a school day, I think there's some common sense and judgment and the officer always uses discretion in these instances. So I'm, it really doesn't raise a concern.
What does this, does this cover special events that happen on the weekend or holidays?
Those are school days, so no. We've been told.
Those are school days? A special event is a school?
I'm sorry, those aren't school days. The, we've been told by the basis schools that they're not going to have evening events or special events there because they don't have the venue for it. If they do that, they'll do that at another one of their school locations. That's what we've been told.
And why wouldn't they park in their own parking lot anyway?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I can't see them using the street.
Well, it's not going to affect me. I don't live on there with regard to a resident. I would just think of Mr. Carter and the Mendoza's and everybody else doesn't care. They'd have to call the city to get permission if they have a party.
I think the initial thought was, and I hate to speak for them since they're sitting right here and it's, it's sort of rude. But Frank, since you were on the committee, didn't you speak with the Mendoza's? And didn't you explain to them through Mr. Carter or something like that?
Actually, the, all the citizens that were there had input and everybody understood. There was some give and take. But everybody was understanding that this is a, this is a first attempt at trying to control things. If for some reason it doesn't work or we need more, then we may be back up here with another ordinance. And to my knowledge and to what I hear, and I don't have this as factual, but it appears that this will only be through May at the latest. And we can reverse these, we can do a lot of things. The intent is to do the best we can to protect the neighborhoods and the neighbors without creating chaos in the beginning. Let's see how we roll with it and, and go from there. But to answer your question, everybody ended up being on board and there were some give and take by the citizens, including the Mendoza's. And everybody understood that. That's my understanding of the meeting.
Let me go a step further here, Douglas. Hang on just a second while we're on this. Mr. Mendoza, would you like to add anything to that, please, since you're in the, in the audience there regarding parking in front of your house?
Not at all. Not the parking itself, no.
Thank you.
The only thing that I was opposed to is that no left turn because this is going to put all the traffic into a for reasons. And none of the traffic is going to go the other way.
Okay. We'll be getting to that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Okay, Mr. Paul, Douglas, go ahead.
Does this include summer school?
School days.
Well, so that would include summer school.
Didn't they promise they'd be out there by Christmas?
No, they didn't promise they'd be out there by Christmas, but we think it's only going to be one school year. I don't know that Basis even has summer school councilman, but I guess if it's a summer school day, then it would apply.
Well, we're concentrating on Basis, but there's another school there in that area and they want to grow big time. So I just wanted to ensure that this also includes summer school.
It does. And we've got actually members from the Christian school here, both Michael, Pastor Michael Pinkson, who's also their superintendent, and Dan Easton from their board. They came to the last traffic committee meeting and there was a lot of productive dialogue between them and the residents. And that's all reflected in what you're seeing before you're here today.
Mr. Mayor, I think you probably, do you think it would be a reasonable scenario if a lot like, if there was, that people, if they knew a large number of people were going to gather at your house for an, for a reason, they could simply call dispatch and say, could we have an exemption because a lot of people are going to be here today? And I hope they would look.
I know what I would do. I wouldn't suggest that anyone break the law or I would suggest that we direct the police in any way. But I would think that if, if they called and informed.
Common sense.
Co- common sense would prevail. And I, I would hope that at that time with our police chief and also our captain sitting here that it might be, it, it might be in the goodwill of the neighborhood to maybe, maybe show some, some discretion in that area. But of course, not going outside the ordinance.
They have the church parking lot too that they can park in, which would pretty much be close to all those houses right there.
And I would think too, you know, it would, it would be based on the situation too. If our office, if someone calls in, the only person that's going to call in is somebody in that neighborhood calling on their neighbor. So if, if someone calls in over there and, and everything would be in somewhat order and, you know, the, the group of people over on South Winston Lane realize that they're going to know whether or not it's their people or the, or the people of the, of the church, that the officers would act in a way that would keep traffic moving. How's that?
I have a question for Mr. Brennan. Could we add amendment to this where if you're a resident, you could call for a variance?
Sure, you, you could have a provision.
So it's legal, so we're not asking our police department to do something that we shouldn't be asking. Could we add variance to that? Yes, sir.
Mike, we need to check with the chief on that. That was a good idea, no doubt about it.
We currently have a, a no parking ordinance two to five and the police department, myself or the captain can authorize up to three months of parking on a street. And Mr. Brennan might be able to clarify, that could simply extend to a no parking on Winston Lane as it does every street. If someone has guests staying overnight and it, we can give up to ninety days, I believe, with them calling dispatch, getting a permit and it's pla- put on their windshield or on their dash. And the officer knows it's on a book in dispatch office, so there's no issues.
Thank you.
So the law's already in effect? Ms. McLenn, did you have any things regarding?
I just want to clarify that what we're looking at is the ordinance that was set up here on the dais today that is labeled twenty one seven oh seven eleven A, but it should be eleven B, correct? But nothing else?
I was on the previous one. Okay. Ms. Scott, did you have any questions or comments on this item seven? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just wanted to add that we try to talk to all the residents in the area to make sure that this wasn't going to be a hindrance for them. We understand that there's a small inconvenience associated with having the school there. And as such, we're all going to work together and be slightly more inconvenienced, but we're doing what we can to mitigate that. And this is phase one of that. It's also realized that this isn't going to last more than two years at a maximum. Ideally, it'll be one year. I think this is the, one of the best things that we can do to prevent any kind of traffic situation with people stopping and also to protect kids that decide they want to run across the parking lot in the middle of the traffic queue.
Before we take a vote on this item, Quentin, you were also signed up for number seven. Was there anything you'd like to say, sir?
Quentin Baker, three oh four Fox Hall Lane. Just a note to put things in perspective. Remember, we're dealing with an eleven hundred student school that's coming into the neighborhood. They have a traffic pattern proposed with all that traffic exiting onto South Winston. So a hell of a traffic volume is coming our way. So when you're putting things in balance, remember, we've got all this traffic coming. We've got the issue of possible renegade parking, kids crossing the street, okay? Safety of our neighborhood. So it's trading off the safety issues versus the inconvenience of, of people parking in front of others, of the neighbors' houses. And, and we did canvass the neighbors and the, as it's proposed, the no parking signs are in front of houses where the neighbors agreed. All right? But to put it in perspective, it's really, we've got to make sure that safety issue is, is what's on the table here because that's the paramount issue. Thank you.
Mayor, just one thing before Quentin leaves, just, there was, Quentin, there was one thing you said that eleven hundred cars will be going out on South Winston. The intent is for the preponderance of the traffic to go out on a Northwest Military from the church, directly from the church parking lot. And there will be some traffic that exits onto South Winston.
So it's a basis traffic?
Not all basis.
Not all basis traffic.
Most of their traffic will go directly out on a Northwest Military. This is for people that want to make the left-hand turn on the Northwest Military only. And, and not even, they can still go out the main entrance, exit and exit left on a Northwest Military.
But they can't turn left into the neighborhood.
They cannot. Per the settlement agreement, they cannot do that. I just wanted to clarify, it's not all eleven hundred cars that'll be pulling out on the Winston Lane.
Yeah, well, good, good correction, thank you.
Thanks, Quentin.
Thank you, Quentin. Before we take a vote, I want to personally thank the, the people that were involved in this. It was a very, very hard thing to go through when you're talking about your neighborhood back there and you're talking about, like Quentin said, safety against inconvenience. So I think that, that, that says it all and why, you know, so someone would ask, why in the world do we even have to do that? All we did was buy a house and move back there is all we did. So Quentin, thank you for, for being on that board, that mayor-appointed committee. Wayne, thank you. Judy Collins, thank you for being on that. I appreciate you serving. Judy Crawford, not Collins, I'm sorry. I don't know why I said Judy Collins. Councilman Trevino, thank you for, for actually kind of heading it up there. And also Frank Paul. Amanda, I know she's not here tonight, but all of you put in a, an unbelievable amount of effort and that could have been frustrating at times. But I know that, I feel like, from what I hear from their upper level management, that this is going to be a one-year situation. I thought we were going to be able to do it by Christmas, but they, I don't think they're going to be able to have it done by then. So with that said, we have a motion, we have a second on the table, we've had discussion. So with that said, let's, let's take a vote. All in favor of moving forward with item number seven on the agenda? It is unanimous, thank you, council. Okay. All right. This next item is something that was brought forward by Ms. McLenn and Ms. Scott. And so what we did was we muddled over it for a few, a couple of months, actually, since May, and, and started talking about the, and it kind of blends into our earlier passage of our platform that, that we talked about. But anyway, let's read it and it is item eight, it's consider. Consider the scheduling of a second regular city council meeting on the fourth Tuesday of each month during regular business hours. In other words, we would have two council meetings a month. One would be during the day and one would be at night. Ms. McLenn? Ms. McLenn?
All right. It's become very clear that we have a lot of business to take care of and one meeting a month really doesn't seem sufficient to actually properly consider everything that comes before council. So Mrs. Scott and I have talked many, many, many times, even during campaigning, that with all the long meetings regarding Basis and other things, that perhaps a second meeting during the month would be a good idea. I attended a TML training last month on the Tuesday that we had the meeting, I think it was June seventh. And almost every city representative that I talked to, they all have two meetings a month in their cities of all different sizes, similar to us and larger, smaller. It, it didn't matter, most met twice a month. So this would be the perfect example of when a message board would have been great. We could have communicated among all of us, the citizens could have seen that we were talking about adding another regular meeting that you all could count on instead of having special meetings that you don't necessarily know when they're going to be scheduled. Our proposal is actually to have a meeting during regular business hours, which is odd for us. Most of our stuff is in the evening. But we recognize that there are many residents that might work in the evenings or that might be able to attend a morning meeting when they can't in the evening. So if you've got one at night, one in the morning, you're sort of splitting the baby and, and hopefully accommodating more residents in having access to our city council meetings. So the purpose of this is actually to discuss with my fellow aldermen when they might be available on the fourth Tuesday to have a meeting during the day.
Thank you, Ms. McLenn. Also, before we get a motion and a second on the table to go into discussion on this, in case you haven't noticed, we're, we're, we're moving more towards electronic, paperless, being able to watch these meetings on the Ustream, which by the way, I forgot to warn you or tell you. We are streaming live right now and all microphones are live. So with that said, that's, that's what I feel this is headed towards. Our, people are taking classes now on paperless entry, storing things in different ways that we've never done before. And also, so if one of these meetings were to go forward, then of course you could watch it on Ustream as it was happening. Do I have a motion? Of course. We'll get into motion first. Okay, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Okay, let's start with Douglas.
What are the business hours?
What are the business hours right now? Mr. City Manager?
The core business hours of the city are seven-thirty to four-thirty for the administrative staff. Of course, police and fire are always here, and dispatch.
Well, I, the earliest that I could make a meeting like this, maybe, if I got away before fifteen, because the stock market closes at three, and I don't get through talking to clients till about quarter of four. I'm counting on fifteen minutes to get here, you're looking at four o'clock to four fifteen. Uh, I really, I really think that if you're going to have a city council meeting, it should be in the evening. Now, I know there are other cities like Alamo Heights, will they be at eight o'clock in the morning?
Uh, that's very rarely. Their regular scheduled meetings are the second and fourth Mondays at five-thirty.
Well, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's something I could attend if it was much later, around five-thirty, but, um, I, I couldn't count on I could get there if it was scheduled during business hours. And, uh, other people might want to attend this thing, and I know they could look on it on television if they want to, but some people like to be here. So, uh, convenience for me would be five-thirty or later.
Okay, Mr. Paul, did you have any questions or comments regarding the, uh, proposal on the table?
Yes, um, I'm kind of at the same frame as Mr. Gregory. I think that if we try to do something like this during the day for the convenience of whatever, it may seem like we're trying to hide something, or may seem that we're not giving the, uh, public the opportunity to be here, to do, uh, what's going on there, not used to it, and, um, I, I just, I'm just not for it, and at the moment, I'm not for a second council meeting. It seems right now that, uh, I'm up here enough as it is, and I believe that our city secretary has a lot to do to prepare for a meeting, and if it's two meetings, he still has to, even though it may not be as much, he still has to spend that much time away from necessary things, so that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Ms. McGlynn, did you have any comments?
You know, everybody has a different schedule, and, and I appreciate that. That's why there's discussion about it. Um, not everyone works nine to five, um, so we, you know, figured it would be, it would be worth having a, a council discussion, and, and it has to be done in an open forum like this, without an online message board, and so we're having the discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Scott, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table, please?
Yes, I do like the idea of having two meetings a month. I think we could get a lot more business done, a lot faster, rather than having to wait for once a month and let it accumulate, so we're sitting here at the end of the day on the fumes of what's left of our energy, and going until eleven o'clock or midnight sometimes, when we could split it in two, and get half done at one, half done at the other. And I also personally had about ten years in my life where I was unable to be part of this process, because I could not attend evening meetings. Had they happened during the day, had they been at eight o'clock, or nine o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock, even over the noontime hour, during the lunchtime hour, I could have been part of this process a lot sooner than I was able to. But I wasn't, due to circumstances, um, in my life, able to come to evening meetings. And I cannot be the only person in the city of Castle Hills that's unable to attend evening meetings. So that's why I was very supportive of this idea, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Ms. Ms. Scott, thank you. Uh, Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, uh, thank you. I can't help but re- realize that city staff stays here substantially later, and, uh, as much as I appreciate that, because that's conducive to my schedule, I also realize that I think everybody has a life, um, and I imagine it would be beneficial to them to, or they would appreciate it at least, getting home a little earlier. I would like to get a feel for where the residents stand, because it's important that y'all are a part of this process, and you have the opportunity to be a part of this process.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. You know, when, when this idea first came up, uh, about a month or so ago, I was thinking that, the first thing that came to my mind, and for those that are my age will, will recognize this phrase, and it's called, "The times, they are a-changing." And we have done things as a council for the past fifty-three years, and we have, uh, rocked along, and things, things have been pretty good, and now there's, uh, there's, there's a lot of different things going on. I appreciate the fact that, uh, Mr. Paul brought up the fact about, uh, maybe the public not being able to, to, uh, watch us in action, or whatever it is, or for, I would, I, I was hoping he didn't mean that we tried to slide something under the board, or anything like that, because that wasn't the attendance at all. What it was, is for better communication, and, uh, being able to, um, be more fresh than, than we are at night. Uh, it also allows some people to get involved that aren't involved now, that can't be here at night. Uh, there's one sitting right next to me that, that happened too, and there's, uh, with, without, uh, well, she said I could say it, Shan- the Shannon Austens of the world, the younger families, the people like that, that drop their kids off at school and then move forward. I would hope that what council would do, and by the way, I am for this, what I would, what I would suggest is that, you know, the things that involve walkability, and the things that involve, uh, the other things that we were doing, be placed on the daytime, uh, type, type roster. And I, as the mayor, could see that that happens, because I can, uh, strike them off the agenda. And that anything, uh, controversial that would have to do with anything like that was coming up in the past couple of months, would be saved for the evening meetings, when the people would, would, would be around. Uh, hang on, Douglas, I'm just about finished. Uh, oh, I wanted to point something out to you, you know, I, I handle my own investments, and I don't start trading till nine o'clock. But anyway, with that said, uh, go ahead.
Well, the way that also this motion is written, the mayor could call the meeting at seven-thirty in the morning, or eight, or nine. There's no consistent time. I think it should be a time certain, because the business hours, as we know, seven-thirty to four-thirty are very wide, and I would, I would think this has to have a time certain on it.
Okay, well, no doubt about that.
Mr. Gregory, I would have loved to have included that in this, except I couldn't discuss it with anyone else. I'd talk with Moretta about this, and so I would have been violating the Open Meetings Act. So, so the point of this is to discuss if there is any possible time, once a month, when all of us could come and be here during the daytime, because I know, I don't know about everyone else, but I'm usually up by five o'clock, and so when it gets to be this late, I don't have my best brain on sometimes, and I would like to give the city some of my better thoughts, which sometimes happen earlier in the day. So the concept is to discuss with each one of you if there is some time during the day, on the fourth Tuesday, that you could give an hour or two hours, and maybe it's a limited agenda until we figure out how it goes. You know, over the lunch hour or something. I don't really necessarily care what time it is during the day, just something to where the city staff doesn't have to stay late, and that we give another segment of the populat- population an opportunity to come to our meetings.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Ms. McGlynn. Oh, ju- just so we know, I mean, I, I read the same thing, and, you know, as I'm retired, I only have four jobs now. So as I, as I said before, what time do you go to work?
It can be.
Actually, New York Exchange opens at eight-thirty, but the futures open at seven-thirty.
Oh.
So, and the market closes on the Pacific Coast at quarter of four.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, Mr. Brennan, if, if we move forward with something like this, could we have a moving time, as far as, uh, called by the mayor seventy-two hours in advance on a regular meeting?
Except whatever rules you want. If you want to say we're going to have it on Tuesday, at a time to be determined by the mayor, uh, after consultation with the members, or something like, you can do anything you want.
Which we could do on a platform now.
Yeah, or you can, oh, yeah, well, you can't make a decision, but you can say, well, better time for me is ten, and somebody else says it's three, and, uh, you know, at some point, you got to decide, or they can leave it up to you to, to decide what hour it's going to be.
Part of the purpose behind this is to give the citizens a set time when they know we're going to be here, so they can always count that we're going to be here at eleven-thirty, and that we're going to leave at one, or whatever the time is. It's, the intent behind this was not to be something open-ended, it was intended to be something that the city staff, that, um, citizens and the council could rely upon every month, that we meet at five-thirty or six on the second Tuesday, and we meet at eleven-thirty, and we sneak a sandwich under the dais, or whatever it is, um, but something that we can rely on, not something open-ended.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Vandewally, as the interested party, can you give us your opinion?
I would just say that Board of Adjustment has changed recently to the fourth Monday of every month, so let's not make it too early in the morning, or we might be here late Monday night and early Tuesday morning for the city, if you're, like, talking about the city staff. Um, uh, I, I think whatever works for council during the business hours would be good. I would appreciate maybe a half hour, half, you know, maybe a, an, no earlier than eight AM, so we can get in here a half hour early and get things opened up, and get the camera turned on, and so on and so forth, so, but any time after that, uh, I think would be reasonable.
Okay. Also, another thing I would like to touch on this while we're, while we're discussing it, is we, uh, that the departments would, are invited, but would not be required to be here. So. I mean, how many questions have we asked the department in the past, what, ten years?
I would say unless it's a topic like, for instance, the Traffic Committee, it's good to have Chief Davis and his guys here for Traffic Committee discussions, because they sat on the Traffic Committee.
Okay.
And they understand it. But I would say as the topics dictate, the department heads would, would, uh, be available to come in during the meeting.
So the city still rolls, and, uh, Minerva, you could actually, uh, you know, we're moving into cross-training and things like that, maybe Nora could actually, uh, in some, in some cases, if you, if you weren't available, and you had things you had to do. No? Okay, good, no. No's good. Okay?
And back to the former question from the councilman, I think, I think if you set nine AM, that gives, uh, parents enough time to get their kids dropped off, if that's who you're catering to, to come and attend, parents, young kids, to get their kids all dropped off to school, and get here in a reasonable amount of time, and then, the nice thing about that is about eleven-thirty, stomachs start rumbling, so, you know, it'll put a somewhat soft end to time on the meeting as well.
Well, I don't think these things are going to drag on for hours and hours and hours. I, I see these things lasting an hour to, to an hour and fifteen minutes.
I think there are some topics that would lend themselves to it. We've been kicking the court of record versus non-record down the road for several months now, because it, the agendas have been so long, and that's a two-hour discussion. And the other question I've asked Mr. Brennan is, could, if Councilman Gregory can't be here physically, could we set up a telephone so that he could teleconference into the meeting, and he said that's, uh, feasible as well? So I understand he'll, he'd be conducting business, if that was the decision of the council, but he could attend kind of, you know.
But the law doesn't allow you to vote. I can attend, but I can't vote.
Yeah. It, it, a person can only do a telephonic participation in very limited circumstances, and I, I don't think it would work to say, for every regu- regular meeting, he's going to have to do it by telephone.
Ms. Mayor? Mm-hmm. I believe also that if there's a situation such as the open records, uh, court of records, excuse me, um, that I'm very much in favor, that we need to look at, uh, we can do that in a special meeting. Anyway, thank you. What does the law say on Skype? Skype?
Uh, same thing as telephonic, it's very limited circumstances.
All right. So let's move on to what we're doing here. We have a motion on the table, we have a second on the table to, uh, consider the appointment that, oop, that's not it, to cons- where'd it go? Uh, oh, consider the, uh, scheduling of a second regular council meeting on the fourth Tuesday of each month during regular business hours. We have a motion, we have a second on the table, uh, that's been suggested that we set a time, so if anybody wants to, uh, come forward with an amendment, now would be the time?
I'd like, I'd like to replace regular business hours with four PM Central Standard or Central Daylight Saving Time.
Okay, we have an amendment, uh, uh, proposed by Mr. Gregory at four PM Central Standard Time on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Mr. Paul seconds it. Okay? So with, with that said, we have a motion, and we have a second. Uh, let's go on into discussion. Douglas?
As I say, um, I just can't make it. I can't guarantee I can make it, and, uh, on my business, because the, the markets open from eight-thirty to three, and then quarter of four on the West Coast, and the futures markets open at seven in the morning, not seven-thirty. So I can't make it at nine o'clock in the morning, or noon, or something, it's, it's wrong for my clients, and it's impossible for me.
Mr. Paul?
I think the decisions we make here need to be for the good of the whole. Uh, Mr. Gregory, myself, uh, we, we may not even be sitting up here next year, so it's, I, I think we need to try to do what's, what's good for the whole at the time, and it's been the way I, I look at it. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. McGlynn?
As the rest of the day might have been terribly inconvenient for you, four o'clock is a terribly inconvenient time, for anyone who has children and people to pick up from school. Um, so this might becoming a, might be on a downward spiral, as far as the discussion goes, um, four o'clock does not work for me.
Okay. Ms. McGlynn?
Uh, four o'clock does not work for me either.
Oh.
Oh. Oh, it's, I assumed, yes. Four o'clock also would not work for me. Um, it's, it's not a viable time.
Okay. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I think at this point, a second meeting is imminent. Uh, it's not standard for council meetings to go on for four or five hours, from what I've heard from my friends that are council members as well. That being said, I would like to table this, so that we can get some feedback from the people in the community, and let us know what works best for them, because as Mr. Paul said, it's for the greater good.
We have a, uh, is that an official motion? Or you're asking?
Uh, Councilman Gregory made a motion that got seconded to amend the first motion to set it at four o'clock.
All right. Well, it died for lack of, uh, oh, it did not. Okay, so we need to make a, uh, we need to make, sorry.
Vote on the amendment.
I didn't mean to do that. We need to make a vote on the amendment after the discussion, please. So we have an amendment to change all hours to four o'clock. Uh, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, amendment fails. All right. With that said, we're moving on to the, uh, original thing with, with Trevino, Mr. Trevino, and he asked to table this meeting, is that an official, uh, can you do that at this point?
Yeah, he can make a motion to table, that takes priority over the other motion.
Okay. So we have a motion to table for Mr. Trevino, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Paul seconds. Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. So we will table this until the next meeting. Okay. All right. We are going to move on to the next item, which is, uh, item nine, is consider, uh, the designation of an individual to research, prepare, preliminary plan, and report to the council at the August meeting regarding the, uh, applicability of one or more of the available Texas Parks and Wildlife grants. Ms. McGlynn or Scott, which one was going to take it?
All right. So in doing a lot of research about pots of money that might be available to us, I ran across a couple of fabulous resources, and one of them is our very own Texas Parks and Wildlife, and they have some amazing grant opportunities. In fact, Hollywood Park just benefited to the two- Park just benefited to the tune of $500,000 from one of their grants. So, this motion is basically to authorize one of us to go and do some research. There are five, five grants that Mrs. Scott and I have identified through the Parks and, Texas Parks and Wildlife, that our city might be able to benefit from. One is the Local Parks Urban Outdoor Recreation Grant. One is the Local Parks Non-Urban Outdoor Recreation. One is a Local Parks Small Community Recreation Grant. Another one is the Local Parks Indoor Recreation Grant. And the final one is the Local Parks Non-Urban Indoor Recreation Grant. These serve different purposes. For instance, the Small Community Recreation Grant, what I was seeing from the press releases is that they usually authorized amounts up to $75,000 for things such as pavilions, playgrounds, picnic tables, walking trails, improvements to small community parks. And these grants are 50% matching grants. So, if we put $100,000 towards a project, the state would put $50,000 towards it. So, basically, we're getting 50 cents for every dollar we spend, which is not bad. Some of the larger ones, in, in fact, the outdoor recreation grants, most of those that I was seeing for things like community centers or redoing swimming pools, larger projects, cities were getting anywhere from 250 to $500,000, with cities like Houston and Dallas and Fort Worth getting upwards of a million dollars depending on the size of the project. So, these are actually a tool that could make our little city, that could benefit our little city, but we need to do a little bit more research on which ones might, might be beneficial to us.
Thank you, Amy. So, let's get a motion and a second on the table to go into discussion, please. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, that was Mr. Trevino. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. That's Ms. Scott. All right. Let's start on the left side. Mr. Trevino, do you have any comments or questions regarding this?
Yes, sir. I think free money is great. I would just, I'd like to learn more about it and see what kind of obligations come with it. So, if somebody's available to research that and present it to council, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
That is, all that is being asked here is that someone be appointed to actually research, prepare preliminary plan, and report back to the council at the next meeting. And that would include Mr. Trevino's concerns of, you know, if we're taking money from whatever entity or, you know, what are we required to do to meet their requirements? One of the things that we are required to do, and that is to discuss it right here in council, and so we're currently, as of speaking right now, meeting one of the first requirements for this grant process. So, yes, that's all we're asking is for someone to research it.
Thank you. Ms. McLean, you explain the situation. Do you have anything else that you want to add to that?
Some of the information regarding the grants is actually not available until you set a login and start the application process. And so, in order to even get more specific information regarding these grants, we needed authority to be able to get a login and password and actually start the application process. Whether we go through with submitting it, we need to have some authority granted to someone.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
I have a question here. It seems to me like in, I don't have a problem with grants. I've been trying to get grants, engineers, Mr. Clots, I mean, the Clots Engineering was supposed to be working on some grants that we can help with the drainage. It's my understanding, well, let me start with my first question then. So, would we have a volunteer working on this? Is that what we're saying? That's number one. Or would we pay somebody? So, if we paid somebody, that's a different thing. Number two, it seems to me like we have to, I don't know about the grants, but it would seem like we would have to have a project to present in order to obtain a grant. Now, if this can be done in a month or two months, you know, that's fine. But then we have to approve a project subject to getting a grant. Or we don't just go get grants and say, well, we're going to use it. Sounds like a bond issue we tried to do a few years ago. But, that's, that's all I have.
Mr., Mr. Gregory?
This raises a question. When you apply for these grants, have you got to have a project in mind?
It appears that you actually do have to have a project in mind because you've got to be able to provide a description. For instance, the one for Hollywood Park in the press release stated, and I'm assuming this was all in their application, "The City of Hollywood Park was awarded a non-urban outdoor grant for $500,000 to develop Voight Park. Proposed renovations and further developments include relocating the sand volleyball court, preparing existing tennis courts, renovating the swimming pool, and adding swimming lanes, and a shallow wading pool, building a multi-sport court with a rubber floor, and installing native landscaping, irrigation, a butterfly garden, and a splash pad." Well, some of the other ones were very simple. They wanted to purchase land for parks, or they wanted to put in a lighted walking trail. So, it doesn't have to be something huge. It could be something even for the commons. But we can't know specifically about the grants until we get into the, have access to the application. And it's all, you have to register with the Parks and Wildlife to get access to it.
Go back to my question. Should, does this require that we have a specific idea in mind when we apply for a grant?
Well, yes, it would. But it doesn't mean we have to apply for the one that's coming up in February, because I don't think we'd have a project in mind that quickly. But it does mean that it's something that we can look at for future planning and actually have some goals that are beyond just having the commons. We can actually look at what people are talking about on Nextdoor and, and try to plan for the future, knowing that these grants exist.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to point out with this is, we started this discussion shortly after the election. I know that Kurt and I did, and then I've spoken to Amy and, and Moretta, which obviously wasn't a quorum. And we, we started talking about what we've done in the past and what we're doing. And you know the part that came up, which we're going to talk about in an executive session again. We've sat up here and we've argued back and forth. We have three pieces of land in Castle Hills, and we basically do nothing. You complained the other day, you saw an outhouse on one of them. Right? Okay. I'd like to point out to council, we can, we can sit around and we can do things the way we've done for the past 50 years, or we can open up the door and look into some ideas, okay, that, that younger families are coming up with. I don't know if you realized what the age drop was in our city in the past five years. From 63 down to, I think it's 58 now. I'll have to look it up. But, you know, younger families are moving in. We, we're still at least considered a premier city, okay, and a place to be with location, location, location. And I, I feel it's important that we, we take a look at this and we start talking about possibly an economic development person slash grant writer. Clots has done nothing for us. Zero. Everybody that we've taken on as engineers promised that they will go out, because that's finding their business is what it's doing. That's what engineers do. They go out and they find business. Okay? All we're doing is paying now. We're not getting the benefit of anybody looking for grants. Yes?
So, I have a couple of comments, if I may. Just so anybody knows where the money comes for these Parks and Wildlife grants, I had pulled up where the funding comes from. The local park grant program comes from a portion of state sales taxes. So, every time you buy something and pay your sales tax, you'd be getting a little bit of that money back if we got one of these grants. It's the state sales tax that's on sporting goods through the Texas Park and Parks, Texas Recreation and Parks account, and also additional funds from offshore gas royalties through a federal land and water conservation fund. So, these are funds that are well-funded. It's money that the state has every year, and it's ours to go for. It looks like every year, they have a nice cross-section of small cities and large cities alike, and the projects sometimes are $25,000, and sometimes they're a million dollars. And it looks like for the past two or three years, every year Houston has gotten at least a million dollars for a park somewhere. So, there's no reason that our little city of 4,200 people can't, can't think big and, you know, look for some help to pay for our things. One thing that I would say about the grant process, I would be willing to look into it. As a matter of fact, the ACC catalog just came out, and there are two grant-writing classes that are 50 bucks a piece. And they're Saturday-long from 8:00 until 3:00. And if this is something that we as a city want to look at, I would be happy to go and sit for a Saturday and learn how to write the best grant that we could to try to get as much money as we can for our city.
So, are you volunteering for this position?
I will volunteer. Yes, sir.
Okay. And also, I want to point out that we sent Janet to this school two years ago. Two years ago, we sent her to this school. What does that mean? Nothing, other than the fact that we did nothing with it. I think we have the energy now to do it, and I think we ought to move forward with this sort of thing. I know we're going to get people, well, if we spend $100,000 to improve our, and I'm just pulling that figure out of the sky, we could have, we could have paved another street with that. I hear that coming, which we could. We could. But what about the person who just built the multimillion-dollar mansion over on Hibiscus because we, or the close to million-dollar mansion that we're going to get ad valorem taxes, and why did they move to Castle Hills? So, we've got to keep moving forward, is what we've got to keep doing, or we sit around and like we have the past 50 years.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan, aside from us appointing somebody to look into this, are we obligating the city to anything at this point?
Not that I understand it. It sounds like the person is going to look into the grant process, and I, somewhere along the way, you have to decide what you want the grant for before you can actually submit it. But it would be helpful if Ms. McLean or somebody would, you know, study the process, so we'd know exactly what the process is going to be. And concurrently, y'all can be kicking around and deciding what projects would be beneficial to the community.
So, at this point, there's really nothing to lose?
Nothing is bound until, you know, it's, till it's actually approved and the funding is committed.
Mike, I can see that. I really, I really can, seeing that, you know, once she gets into it, she starts digging into it, there, there's, just, just glancing over it like, like, like I did, there's a lot of projects that, that we're not even aware of. And it slapped me in the face when Hollywood Park, you know, did something about it. And you ought to see it. Now, I don't know that we need a swimming pool, and I don't know if we need this, but it really enhanced our neighborhood to the point that it, you know. Mr. Mayor? Mayor fails. You know, they're back on the map again. Yes, sir?
I agree. We have to move forward with this because right now, we're not, we don't have information to deal with, and we need information to deal with. And that will take a plan, and to know how that plan needs to be presented. So, I, I mean, this is a, I don't see a problem with this.
All right. Good. All right. We have a motion. We have a second on the table. Anybody else have anything to say before we move forward with appointing? I guess it would have to be in an amendment, right, to who we were going to appoint?
If it wasn't in the beginning, we need to add it as an amendment now.
I'm sorry?
I, I, I don't remember whether y'all said from the beginning in the motion that it would be Ms. McLean, but if not, she needs to be added in as the point person.
Now, just to keep everything legal, let's, let's have an amendment to that and appoint, decide who we're going to appoint to that on council. And then they can get with Janet because Janet has taken those classes. And that's how, that would be the tie to admin. So, do I have a motion for the volunteer?
I'm making mo, oh, I was going to say, I motioned to change it from a designation of an individual to research to designation of Alderman McLean to research.
Great. We have a motion. We have a second. We won't talk about it because we already know she wants it. So, with that said, did you want to say something, Douglas, about Ms. McLean? Anyone else? So, we don't rush through this. Okay, good. We have a motion. We have a second on the table. A motion by Ms. Scott, and seconded by Mr. Gregory. All in favor of Ms. McLean? Good. It's unanimous. Okay. Now, let's go back to the original, which is, "Consider a designation of, of a individual to research, prepare, and preliminary plan, and report to council in the August meeting regarding acceptability of one or more of the available Parks and Wildlife Grants."
I move the motion as amended.
Thank you. All right. It's already done. So, all we have to do is vote now. We really didn't have to do that because it was already on the table.
No, but you've got it out there. Vote on it, and we'll move on.
There you go. Let's vote. All in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. Let's move forward. All right. The next one is...
Mayor, before we move on, can we go back to item seven? I, I did not capture who made the motion and who made the second on that item. I know we voted 5-0. That's the ordinance on South Winston Lane.
Who's the original motion made by? It was made by, I believe I made the motion. Okay. He made the motion, and I think Ms. Scott was the second.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's move on to the next one, which is "Consider an act upon approval of a revolution, Resolution 20170101, adopting the Bear County Hazard Migration Plan 2017." Mr. Dover?
We've, we've got one more, Mayor. That's item 10, which is the...
I'm sorry. Mr. Dover, hang on. "Consider by the appointment of the Walkability Committee to research Parks and Wildlife Grants specifically related to the recreational trails and community outreach and Alamo MPO Grants regarding walkability." Ms. McLean?
All right. The Texas Parks and Wildlife has two other grants, which our little city might be able to utilize. One of them has to do with the creation of recreational trails, and another one has to do with community outdoor outreach programs. And these would be like outdoor education-type things. We already have a walkability study that was done last August by the Alamo Area MPO, and they also have some grants available regarding walkability. This is something that our citizens have expressed a great interest in. And so, the motion on the table today, or the, the agenda item, is to actually appoint a committee of citizens that would be comprised of five or seven members of our community who have specific skills or experience with recreational trails or walkability, or who have expressed an interest in creating programs or improving the walkability of Castle Hills. The committee will also have one or two council liaisons, one or two members from the police department, and up to one member from the fire department if the fire department chose to participate. The committee would be tasked with figuring out a way to connect Castle Hills to the City of San Antonio linear trail and park system. The committee would be tasked with working with members of the fire and police departments to consider recreational trails and other improvements that would accommodate motorized vehicles, such as the ATV, ATVs and golf carts. The committee would also be tasked with studying and considering the grants available from Texas Parks and Wildlife for recreational trails and community outdoor outreach programs. Both of these grants have February 1st application deadlines, and the Alamo Area MPO grant has a deadline of December 4th. The committee would be tasked with researching other funding for recreational trails, walkability, and improvements. And they would have an October 1st deadline to provide the city manager with a report of their findings, reporting back to city council at the October 10th city council meeting, with the idea that we could take action and approve as middle of a, of a grant proposal. The recreational trail fund is much more exciting than the other grants. This is an 80% reimbursement grant. So, if we spend $100,000, we could get $80,000 back. So, I feel like this is a huge, as long as you can put the money up front, the, the state reimburses you. This is funded by the same state sales tax on sporting goods and the offshore drilling and stuff that I talked about before. But the terms of these grants are much, much more enticing. If you just have walking trails, it's 80% of up to $100,000. And if you have motorized trails that accommodate ATVs or golf courts or any sort of motorized vehicles, then you can get up to 80% of $200,000, which seems like a pretty nice return on our investment to me, and something well worth having a committee to look after.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. One thing I wanted to point out is, I don't know if you remember, but about a year ago, maybe a little more, we had Mobility come out, and we actually had a walkabout. How many people showed up? 35? 35 residents showed up. The majority was probably younger families. But what happened is, they, they had these, and that's, that's when, again, this thing came up. We are the only city in our area that doesn't have bike trails. We are the only city in our area that doesn't have bike trails. It ends at, up here north of us, Chavino Park does, and they call it a blackout, and Castle Hills is what the term was used in Mobility. And they're, part of that money that they're talking about as far as these grants and, and other related items would be, and we've been talking to them over, over the past year about what it would take in order to get, you know, bike lanes down Northwest Military Highway, and bring us into what most of the, most of the city has, again, inspiring our area, our city, into a city that, that people would want to move into. So with that said, let's talk about, Douglas, your thoughts?
No comment.
Okay. Frank?
This is the same as before, we can't make a decision on anything unless we have the information, so I don't have any problem getting the information.
Okay. Amy, you explained it, so, that's what we're doing, we're getting the ball rolling, okay? That's, that's where it starts, is to talk about it. If there's interest in it, then we have probably over twenty people that would, that would volunteer to be on that committee and work with the City of San Antonio in Mobility. Of course, anything that we did would come back to council before we did anything. Amy?
You know, from the press releases that I read on this, some of these grants are as simple as being able to redo the surfing, surfacing at the commons, I mean, that sort of thing, putting exercise equipment by the trail, improving those sorts of things, it can be all sorts of different things, and it's money out there for us to ask for with the right project, so let's get some research done.
Thank you. Ms. McLean?
Scott.
Oh, Scott, sorry.
That's okay. This particular project really excites me, because we've been talking walkability, walkability, walkability for the past, oh goodness, a couple of years, and now we find out that eighty percent matching funds, that is really good, so let's get a committee working on this, I'm definitely, obviously, behind this, I think it's great, and particularly the fact that there's even more money available if we provide trails for off-road vehicles, and in Castle Hills, we just passed, that we can have ATVs and golf courts, and this would be an opportunity to provide some trails for those to actually move within the city, as well as the walkability. And one thing I did want to mention is I had a wonderful conversation with a gentleman in Austin, I called, because when you're looking at grants, they have all these words that you're trying to figure out what they mean, and so when it falls into grants, you either fall into a non-entitled city or an entitled city. And at the time, I had no idea what that was, so I called a gentleman in Austin who runs all the non-entitled grants, and he was a lovely man. He informed me that we are an entitled city, and I was kinda like, oh, okay, and he goes, no, that's great, that's great, that means you're entitled to funds, and so you need to go after them. He really encouraged us, and he said at any time, if we needed information or anything, he'd be willing to, to provide that to us. So I'm just really excited about it, particularly the walkability aspect, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trevino, do you have any comments on this, please?
Yes, sir, I, as I mentioned before, I think it's a great idea if we can get some free money for the city. I am interested in seeing how we would utilize the trails, I don't know where the land would be, but I'm sure if y'all have brought it forward, you have an idea, and I look forward to hearing about it.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Before we, before we actually go into a vote on this, in case you heard and you don't know, was it the last meeting or the meeting before where we passed the ordinance where you can drive a golf cart on our streets now legally, or a UTV, okay? It has to be able to seat people, is what it has to do. Lights, horn, a safety thing on the back, and it falls under all the rules of, and get with the chief if you're not, if you're not sure about that, but, and there are certain streets you can cross military on, you can't drive down Military Highway. It, it works, a Bear County sheriff pulled me over on Sunday and asked me what I was doing, and I told him I was going to church on my UTV, and he said, okay, you're not allowed to do that, and I said, well, you better check with our chief and see. So anyway, long story short, I didn't get a ticket, but if, for all, for those of you who have these vehicles, if you wanna get to the chief and get the actual rules, I think it has to have a horn, too. Yes, we do have an ordinance that's in writing in a law. So, with that said, we're going back to item ten, we have a motion, we have a second on the table, we've all expressed our comments, all in favor? Thank you, it is unanimous. Mike, is this, this will be a mayoral-appointed committee?
Yes, sir, it's not a standing committee.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to eleven, that we tried to, tried to do earlier. Consider an act upon the approval of a Resolution R. 201701, adopting Bear County Hazard Mitigation Plan 2017. Mr. Dover?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before Chief Riedel left last year, at the beginning of the year, we were contacted by Bear County, and they were putting together a program for the hazard mitigation, and what this includes is anything involving natural disasters, weather-related incidents, that kinda stuff, and how we would respond to that, and develop a plan moving forward, once these have occurred, how we would mitigate that and do different things. So in partnership with Bear County, area suburb cities like us, we, we met a few times last year, we had to develop a plan and come forward, basically, we were tasked with finding three problems that we potentially could have in our city, how we would mitigate that, and suggestions, I guess, how to control some of this stuff, and moving forward. One thing that we actually benefited from, we already had the Streets and Drainage Committee, so we already had their report dealing with the, you know, runoff, floodwaters, things of that nature, so that was one of our key topics that we used when addressing this. Other things that it could, could include is something as simple as early storm warning devices, Leon Valley just placed a tornado or flood siren in their city, and different things. The big benefit to this and adopting it, basically, the, the plan focuses on how we would deal with this, and this would then in turn allow us to, I guess, go after grants through FEMA to help with the mitigation of these. It'll help with drainage, different projects like that, stuff that we would deal with, the, the floodwaters and drain, the drainage issues that we're already facing, it would enable us to pursue the FEMA grants associated with that. FEMA is very finicky, they want us to develop emergency action plans, different things that will address this stuff before they will make anything available to the cities. So as I prepared the memo, basically, the focus of the plan was to identify activities to mitigate hazards classified as high or moderate risk, as determined through the detailed hazard risk assessment conducted at the Bear County and participating jurisdictions. The hazard classification enables the county and participating jurisdictions to prioritize mitigation actions based on hazards which can be present, I'm sorry, which can present the greatest risk to lives, property in the geographic scope. The plan was prepared by Bear County, participating jurisdictions, as well as an outside firm that was brought in, H2O Partners, Inc. The purpose of the plan is to protect people and the structures and to minimize the cost of disaster response and recovery. The goal of the plan is to minimize or eliminate long-term risks to human life and property from known hazards by identifying and implementing cost-effective hazard mitigation actions. The planning process is an opportunity for Bear County, the participating jurisdictions, stakeholders and the general public to evaluate and develop successful hazard mitigation actions to reduce future risk of loss of life and damage to property resulting from disasters in the Bear County planning area. By approving this plan, by resolution, it will allow the city to, the opportunity to apply for FEMA grant money to address issues with the mitigation of hazards, such as drainage, early storm warning devices and other emergency equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Dover. Okay, let's get a motion and a second on the table, and then we'll move forward with discussion.
I move that we accept the plan as outlined.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Second? Mr. Trevino, a second? Thank you, Mr. Paul and Trevino. Okay, Douglas, you have any questions for Mr. Dover, please?
Grant money implies government money, and government money, if I'm right, is gonna be coming through FEMA, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Well, I've got some problems with this, I'll go from back forward. Section five, all resolutions herefore adopted which are in conflict with provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed. I'd like to know what we're repealing, repealing, let's not listen to this. Number four, number four, this is an open-ending, bottomless pit for the city. The City of Castle Hills agrees to take other subsections as may be reasonably necessary to carry out the objectives of the plan, and since it's government money, FEMA is going to have to determine whether we've done that, and if we haven't, they could superimpose upon us things that we may not be able to pay for. Number three, section three, says the plan will be reviewed at least annually. By whom? FEMA? The mayor? You? It, it's very vague. Then they go to the, the last whereas. The Bear County Hazardous Mitigation Plan outlines a mitigated vision, goals and objectives, excessive risks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If we don't follow the mission, vision, goals and objectives as required by FEMA, aren't we saying that we are going to be forced to do so, if we're gonna take any of this grant money? So we don't know, we have not an idea, one, what we're repealing, we haven't a clue the cost of what this would be to the city if we adopted this. Government money is very seductive, but I've seen FEMA, FEMA, and I've seen other government agencies, once they got you, and you agree to it, you're in for a buck, you're in for a dollar, you're in for a dime, you're in for a dollar. I, I'm very leery of this. There's just a lot of things, I think, that have to be looked at, fleshed out, before we even remotely consider eliminating everything that FEMA thinks we ought to eliminate, and putting ourselves up to whatever FEMA tells us to do, we've gotta do it. And if that happens, where does the money come in that respect? Does it come from street and drain? Does it come from a special committee? Where does that come from? So I think this opens up a real briar patch of problems, and until we address all of them, or at least the major ones, I can't see that at this time, that this is beneficial to the city.
Understood. That would take more research, certainly on my part, and I'm, I'm happy to meet with you, and we can address all of those, and I'm happy to take that to Bear County and meet with the, with the Office of Emergency Management there, and maybe we can get better clarification for that. Unfortunately, right now, I don't have those answers for you, sir.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, Chief, I'm along the same lines as Councilman Gregory. Once you sign the document, once the city signs a document, that brings a whole lot of stuff to us, whether we, and if we take money, that'll be worse. If I'm not mistaken, we have a pretty good emergency plan in place.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would like to take you up on meeting with you, and maybe Councilman Gregory would, too, that we could sit and share our concerns and say, okay, what about this, and why are they doing? We'll give you questions that you can ask, I don't have a need to go interfere, it's your, it's your responsibility, but we certainly have a responsibility to give you what our concerns are, and get as much input as we can before we move on this.
Certainly.
Ms. McLean?
I have not actually had a chance to review the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I understand it's lengthy.
It's very lengthy, yes, ma'am.
And I would, especially the key parts where you had to focus on three different things, I would really like an opportunity to be able to review that, but I like the idea of having a mitigation plan and being prepared, if something horrible happened, I just would like to do some more research. I seem to be on board with the rest of the council, I had a few concerns and qualms about section five, and possibly four. I did attempt to find a copy of the mitigation plan, I searched all over the web, I Googled everywhere, could not find a copy, was finally given a copy today.
Okay.
So I don't want to just say, this isn't, this isn't gonna happen, I would like an opportunity to actually read the hazardous mitigation plan, and I understand it's over six hundred pages, and that's fine, I can read six hundred pages, but I'd just like the opportunity to read and see exactly what we're getting ourselves into before we get into it, and I'd also like to, for the opportunity to be in, on the meeting with, with you and other council members, after reviewing the plan and taking some notes about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir, thank you. Chief, thanks for bringing this to our attention. To your knowledge, are there any other cities in the area that have adopted similar resolution?
I'm not sure of any that have adopted it as of yet, I can tell you that Hollywood Park, there's an entire list of participating agencies, Hollywood Park, Leon Valley, Balcony Heights, ourselves, the City of Kirby, the City of Converse, Alamo Heights, Tarrell Hills, Alamo's Park, quite a few of the suburb cities are all participating in this. So as to answer if they've adopted it as of yet, I, I'm not aware, I'm not sure.
And if you were able to find that out, I'd greatly appreciate it, and curious what the perspective is of other fire chiefs and how they, their experience with it. I, I would agree with the rest of my colleagues that the language is a little bit nebulous, I'd like to spend a little more time and find out exactly what that means to the city, and...
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Dover, thank you. Thank you for opening up your mind and going out and look at this, and, and another thing I'd like to say is don't give up.
Oh, no, not at all.
You might get beat up, knocked down, everything else, but I wanna point something out, that the only grants we have ever taken seriously and done in this city have come from the fire department.
And to that, I would like to say that when Councilwoman McLean is attending those grant-writing workshops, I would very much like to participate in that as well, I would welcome the opportunity to go down to the, to the college and sit through the class, there's certainly great opportunity there for the fire department, and I would, I would welcome that.
All I gotta say is stand strong.
Sure.
Okay, and, and keep 'em coming, because I think Douglas's view on this is, is, is right on, but the point is, is we wanna make sure we know what we're getting into, but if we sit back and do nothing, we get into nothing.
Sure.
So, thank you, thank you for doing that, maybe it'll rub off.
I'd like to table this until the October Castle Hills City Council meeting.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion on the table by Mr. Gregory, we have a second by Mr. Paul, all in, to, till October, all in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the next one, which is item twelve, consider the approval of, to transfer all legal responsibility for the CHCO bank account to the Castle Hills Community Organization, CHCO. Mrs. Riley isn't here this evening, so we will turn that over to Mr. Van DeWalt.
Kurt. Hey, Suzanne wasn't here, couldn't be here this evening, but she did come to me, and she wanted to clean the language up on this a little bit, because it's not necessarily transferring all legal responsibility, what it is, is, so let me, let me clean up the language first, it would read, consider by minute entry the approval to transfer Fund Eleven, which is the Fiesta Castle Hills Fund, to the Castle Hills Community Organization, and dissolution of said fund. So let me explain what's been happening. When CHCO stood up, there was a, there was an agreement, a resolution, that the City of Castle Hills would kinda serve as caretaker of their funds, so we've had a separate fund, Fund Eleven, and any funds that are raised go into that fund, and we manage them completely separately from any other city fund, it's all done in conjunction with the Castle Hills Community Organization. That creates some problems, particularly since they are not a city-sponsored organization, and it creates some... and it creates some liability issues. So, for instance, if someone were to get, someone were to get hurt at the Fiesta party, for instance, and they wanted to sue the Castle Hills Community Organization, they, we'd have, we'd have a real hard time making the case that they were a separate and distinct entity from the City of Castle Hills while we're managing their fund for them. So, right now, they're in Fund 11, there is $17,048.91. So, the, this would, by approving this, what we would do is we would cut that check to the Castle Hills Community Organization, and then they would deposit that check into a bank account that they've established. So, that's what we're asking council to consider tonight, is just basically making that clean break and allowing them to manage their own fund separately.
Okay. Mr. Brennan, you agree with that on the clean break? If, if we hand the money over to them, then what about the, the people who have donated to this fund? And do we have any liability to them at all, like, you know, the people who have given a thousand bucks or 2,000 to sponsors or anything like that? Do we need to notify them, or do we just give it to them, since they are not an entity? Are they a 401K, B, or whatever it is? So, we're handing it over to John?
They're a 501(c)(3).
They are a 501(c)(3).
No, the community organization is a social organization, so it would be a 501(c)(6) or whatever a social organization is.
I would like to get something in writing. I mean, you know, if we could, we could do that, you know, because if you're handing it over to board members, of what?
Well, maybe need more clarification. I don't know the legal status of this entity, if it is an entity.
Frank, you said they're a member of...
They have a president, vice president, they've been in business, they are. I think we ought to check and make sure that they're still, it's 501(c)(4), I guess, instead of (3). As far as the people putting the money in, I think a lot of us have donated to that fund specifically for Fiesta Castle Hills. So, it's still going to be going to Fiesta Castle Hills.
What if we don't have one next year?
Do what?
What if we don't have one next year?
Well, it's, it's, but it's their money that they've got revenue from to use now. Because of their particular status, they can't just give out, pay the people. They have to go along with, with the rules of the 501(c). And again, I use (3), it's probably a (4), (4), (5), or something like that. But I'm not a tax guy, so...
Yes, sir.
What other events is the Castle, this is the old, they changed the name, I forget what it was before. What other events?
Homeowners Association.
Homeowners Association. The Castle Hills Community Center does other things than Fiesta Texas, correct?
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay. So, if the money that has been specifically deposited in the fund for Fiesta Castle Hills, for Fiesta, we're now taking the funds that were designated for that and co-mingling into an organization that could spend the funds in any other thing they so desire, but that their organization has.
We don't, we don't direct how they spend the funds now. They spend them however they see fit. We just manage the account for them.
This was specifically set up by ordinance specifically to be used for Fiesta Castle Hills. I made the motion for that usage.
But they, they host movie nights, they host bands, they host a variety of different things, Councilman. What I'm saying is...
That's not my problem, because the money that was put in there was specifically to be only used, the Fiesta Castle Hills group, specifically to be used for Castle, Fiesta Castle Hills activities.
Again, again, I don't think we get involved at all with the management of the fund and how it gets directed, how it gets spent. I believe we just manage the account for them with regards to accepting funds into it, depositing in our bank account, keeping a fence between them and the City of Castle Hills fund, so it's managed as a separate entity.
Wait until you check the history, when it was set up, it was specifically set up by council.
But their board makes those decisions, is what I'm saying, Councilman. We don't make those decisions.
Yes, the Castle Hills Committee does that. When you're moving that money that was designated to Fiesta to the Homeowners Association, which does a lot of other things, you're co-mingling funds that were specified for one specific purpose into an organization that does a lot of different things.
Councilman Gregory, I mean, they, they collect funds mostly, mostly from Fiesta, Castle Hills Fiesta. They collect funds other ways, they get donations, and, thank you, from dues. And the dues aren't specifically marked for Fiesta. They're, they're made to the Homeowners Association or to the Castle Hills Homeowners Association. So, it's their money, and, and they can do what they want with it. And the people who are liable, the people who are responsible, are the officers of the, of the group. And they're the ones that, they're the ones who are going to have an issue if they aren't going according to the bylaws. That's my opinion.
Well, when the whole thing's set up, I donated privately, but then the mayor revealed what I had done, six or $700 for the banner for Fiesta Castle Hills. And it came specifically out of the Fiesta Castle Hills allocation. That money was put in for, that's why it was named Fiesta Castle Hills Fund. And...
Mr. Brennan, can we, can we go ahead and change this motion to transfer all legal responsibility for the CHCO bank account, fund number so-and-so, to the designated, what'd you call it, Frank? The, the entity?
Oh.
C...
CHCO?
No, the entity.
Well, that would be the entity.
That is the entity.
Okay.
The other is just a, a tax situation that they fall under. But the entity is the CHCO, and they have their own board of directors, president, whatever the case may be. I pay my dues to them, and I don't mark on there for Fiesta Castle Hills.
Douglas, I think if we, if we name what fund we're handing over to them, you know, they're the ones that are going to have to own up to what they're spending it for.
If, Mr...
We don't spend it.
Mr. Brennan, if we give this to the Homeowners Association, will they have the right to spend the money any way they want to?
Probably. I mean, whatever their, their bylaws says.
The money that was put into this specifically for Fiesta Castle Hills was to be spent only on Fiesta Castle Hills activities.
Are you saying that the City of Castle Hills put money into this fund?
No.
Okay, then it's their gig.
But the donors did, and the city, it was used as a conduit so that people could make a donation specifically for Fiesta Castle Hills. If they wanted to make it to the Homeowners Association, they would have made it.
Well, they're a tax, they're, they're a tax-free entity, donation charity anyway, so you could do directly so, but...
Did you write this off on your income tax? Never mind. That's where we're going here.
I have a question. Is this Fund 11, as you call it, the only monetary fund that the CHCO currently has to draw from?
Yes, this is, this is the CHCO fund.
They don't have a bank account?
And to go back to what Councilman Gregory's saying, I believe what, when it was initially established, it was specifically as a Fiesta Castle Hills Fund. But the organization, organization itself, the CHCO, well formerly the Homeowners Association, now the CHCO, has morphed. And so, there's only ever been, to my knowledge, one account, this is it, and they manage it however they see fit. We're just making bank deposits for them and cutting checks when they need checks cut and reconciling. That's, that's all. It's there, as Councilman Poil, Councilman Paul pointed out, they're managing how this money is spent, whether it's for movie night, whether it's for a band out here in the commons, whether it's for Fiesta Castle Hills, whether it's for the Christmas tree lighting, or whatever they're doing with these dollars, that's being managed by their board. And probably the fact that it's called the Fiesta Castle Hills Fund is a misnomer from, and a holdover from when it was initially established.
Okay, that was my question, because I've paid my dues to this organization, and I've paid it because I enjoy the movie nights and the concerts in the commons and that sort of thing. So, if we did transfer them the money, this is a legal question, if we transferred this account over to them, could we then give them the responsibility, if people are making donations specifically for Fiesta, then it's their responsibility to use those donations specifically for Fiesta, or if they've given a donation? Because I know people have donated quite a bit of money specifically for movie nights. They've used that money for movie nights. People have donated for specific purposes. If we transfer them the money, then do we can't, can we transfer all of that responsibility to them? I mean, isn't that their responsibility?
Can I clarify that again, please? Because it seems that it's such a simple thing. All we've been is holding the funds for them because it was convenient to do so in the earlier years. It's not our funds, we're not transferring any money, we're not doing anything. All we're doing is saying, oh, here's your check back, here's your money back.
Well, and I think all Moreta was asking is, do they have another bank account? Or is this their only bank account, and we've actually been doing all the accounting for them as a city?
Correct. We have been doing the, exactly. We, they have not had the bank account, and we've just been holding it for them and acting as their bank and going through our accounts. That's why it's important from a liability perspective to divide this up.
Now, I understand Councilman Gregory is saying that this was set up specifically for Fiesta Castle Hills. Is that in writing anywhere?
If you look at the minutes, there was a debate by the council on whether or not the council, the city, should put any donation into this thing. And because it was privately run by somebody for quite a few years, the city said, we'll hold it as a convenience for this private organization which was running this. This was not being run by the Homeowners Association. This was an individual person who basically ran it for quite a few years. Because this seemed to me that if this is, we were moving this over to the Homeowners Association, it should be a specific fund that the Homeowners Association can draw fund only for Castle Hills Fiesta activities.
We're giving them their money back. Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion that we approve this?
It's never theirs.
Okay. All right, so let's make a motion on this item, please. Do we have a motion?
I still have one question. I mean, I'm really, I'm not clear from everybody's arguments on the issue about whether, when I pay my dues, whether it's coming into an account here at the city. I mean, it's going into the city's, so it's all the dues money and everything in there, then it's not Fiesta money like Mr. Gregory is arguing. If my, if my dues to that organization have been put into that account, we can't tell them how to use that money.
Exactly.
Minerva, do we have a motion on this in a second? On this one yet?
I'm making a motion.
Okay. Mr. Paul made a motion, did I have a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have, so now we can really talk about it. All right, so...
I'm done talking about it.
This is the, I mean, Douglas, I remember that conversation, and I remember how, how it went down. And I guess the difference is, I don't understand what the difference would be if we gave them, gave them back the money and, and, you know, changed a little bit of wording on this motion in order to transfer it back to...
Well, first of all, it was never their money in the first place. And second, I would...
It's whose money in the first place?
It was never the Homeowners Association's money. It was the Fiesta Committee's money. It was never the city's, and it was never the Homeowners Association's money. No, it was not run by the, the Homeowners Association, nor was it run by the city. I would be amenable to move this to a separate fund entitled Castle Hills Fiesta Castle to be run by the Homeowners Association, but...
We don't have a Homeowners Association.
Well, the Castle Hills Community Organization.
Okay, okay.
And have them have specific checking accounts, so those funds moved to that, which they can oversee, can only be spent for Fiesta Castle Hills, and not for movie night, and not for soft drinks, and not for...
Well, I guess if that's how you feel, maybe you ought to do an amendment to the motion.
I'm, all right, let me see here.
This is why these meetings are so long.
Co-mingling of funds is not a minor matter. I made a move that we transfer all legal funds entitled the funds in the current Fiesta Castle Hills Fund to the Castle Hills homeowner, Castle Hills Community Organization, segregating these funds separately to be used only as originally intended for Fiesta Castle Hills.
Okay, so we have in a, a, dang, that got me screwed up. Okay, we got a amendment to the motion. Douglas has made it, do I have a second for that amendment? Do I have a second for the amendment of Douglas's motion? Amendment dies for lack of, of a second. Now, on the table, we have, we know what we have, and we're talking about, "Consider the approval to transfer Fund Number 11, all legal responsibility for the CHCO, which Fund 11 is the bank account, to the City of Castle Hills Community Organization." Is there anyone else who would like to speak on that? Mr. Paul, you already did, did you want to? Okay, Ms. McLean? Okay, Ms. Scott? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll be quick, I promise. I understand Mr. Gregory's position that it was originally earmarked for the Fiesta Castle Hills, but that was many years ago. Do you remember the exact year, sir?
What year, whenever they started?
Approximately.
I guess. Smiley was the mayor at that time, so to say.
Seven years ago.
Six, seven years.
Okay, well, seven years ago. Within that time, I have donated to the organization, and I did not donate with the pretense that it was strictly for Fiesta. And I would imagine that the other people that pay their dues, pay their dues under the pretense that it's not specifically for Fiesta. So, for you to want to earmark it specifically for Fiesta, in my opinion, is wrong. And that's why I believe it should go to the general fund for the Castle Hills Community Organization to do with as they see fit.
Mr. Brennan, does the city have a liability when funds are donated to a specific group for the city to step in and designate those funds be given to another specific group to be run as they so determine?
You know, all I can say about that is that life moves on, circumstances change, and if, if they entrust, if the people that donated money in the beginning for a Fiesta banner did that, and then there was money left over, and the city later decided, the custodian of the money decided that it wanted to separate itself from responsibility for the money and give it to an appropriate organization, the city can do that, even though it might, you know, might not have the proximity or the closeness that it should. I, I think the city's just reacting in certain senses the way they are now. And the city is better off not being responsible for this meeting, this money, because if somebody else is directing the expenditure and use of the money, and the city is taking orders from some other organization, the city has a lot more liability, in my opinion, for, for, for letting all that happen than it is transferring it to a particular organization that the city considers a credible organization. I think, you know, your auditor is always going to tell you, don't be in charge of somebody else's money because you might get tagged for the way it's misspent.
We, we do have a copy of the minutes from that meeting that Councilman Gregory has mentioned. And he's, I mean, he's right on point. The question is just, you know, if you were to go back and say, who is the Fiesta Castle Hills organization now? It's, it's the CHCO, and they've morphed, and their leadership's changed, their bylaws have changed. So, I, I don't know, this is kind of a sticky wicket, but the money, the money really never was the City of Castle Hills. It's always been the Castle Hills Community Organization or the Homeowners Association, or whatever you want to call it, right? And they're responsible for how it, how it is managed and dispersed, and so on and so forth.
I don't see this as being a sticky wicket at all. If, if this money was originally donated six or seven years ago, surely any money donated for Fiesta six or seven years ago has spent, been spent in some capacity and replaced with dues. And so, as Mr. Brennan said, you know, it would be the doctrine of Ciprée from a legal standpoint, that if the city's giving the money to a similar purpose, which would be social, social programs for the citizens of the community, I don't see a problem with giving the money without any designation.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a call for a vote, point of order?
Mr. Paul has called a point of order and a vote. All right, now we're getting ready to take a vote here. Wow, let's, let's just make sure everybody's on, on point here. This is going to be a roll call vote? Mr. Trevino?
Can you, I'm sorry to be difficult, sir, but I just want to make sure that I'm voting on what I think I am.
Say that again?
Can you repeat the, the motion?
Uh, yes. "Consider by entry the approval to transfer Fund 11, all legal responsibility for the CHCO bank account to the Castle Hills Community Organization, CHCO."
I vote to approve it.
Okay. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I vote to move the money. Aye, too, yes.
Ms. McLean?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, I vote to give them their money back.
Mr. Gregory's a no vote. It passes four to one. Thank you. All right, here we go. Let's move on down the line here. "Consider by minute of entry board appointments to the Crime Control Prevention District, CCPD, for vacancies created by the expired term of Mike Poole and the resignation of Conry Davidson." You're good? Okay. Mike, I understand in a written letter that Mike Poole wants to stay on. Uh, is that correct, chief? Yeah, in other words, we, we contacted him, and he said he wanted to stay on. Just so you know, uh, Mr. Button, uh, was tasked to send out, uh, letters to all of these people, and they were to get back with us on these, uh, boards, and they all did so, I believe. Um, so with that said, Mike wants to stay on it, uh, so we need another one. Is that correct? To replace Conry Davidson.
We currently have a council member on the committee?
Are you looking for nominations, Mr. Mayor?
I can do the council liaison as I was originally, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, but y'all shouldn't be putting yourselves on a subordinate board like that.
Okay, that's why I was curious.
I was on it, it wasn't any good, anyway. That's a joke. Okay, uh, do, do I have a, um, a nominee?
Yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Trevino, excuse me.
Yes, sir, I, I've only had one person reach out to me, and that's, uh, former Councilman John Squire.
Former Councilman John Squire. Anybody else have a, a nominee? Wow. I guess it's, I guess nobody else had a deal. I wish somebody would've done that on me. All right, so with that said, uh, we're, uh, we're going to go ahead and, uh, vote on Mr. Squire. We have, uh, a nomination by Mr. Trevino for John Squire.
Mr. Mike Poole?
And for Mike Poole. I guess we need to, do we need to do it separate, or just do them both as the appointee?
Uh, you can do them both, if nobody else has come up with a different nomination.
Nobody else came up, so we have Mike Poole, and we have John Squire. Uh, do we need a second, or do we just appoint? Do I have a second, please, on that? All right, good. All in favor? It's unanimous. Boy, John, I'm impressed. All right, let's move on. Congratulations, John, on your new appointment. I'm sure you'll do a good job. Now, we're moving along at nine o'clock, and we are going to go into executive session. The City of Castle Hills will convene--
Announcements, Mayor.
I don't have 14. Oh, announcements, okay, all right, here we go. Okay, here we go. Here's announcements by city council. Mr. Trevino?
I, I don't, actually, I don't have anything to announce.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino, and Mr.--
No announcement.
Scott. Ms. McLean?
I would just ask any citizens that would like to have input on a time for a second council meeting to reach out by email or on Nextdoor, um, and just, you know, let the council know what time you think would be a great time for us to meet on the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
You good? Just wanted, people take notice of the books that are in here and the books in the community room. A resident of Castle Hills died last year, Patrick Henry Butler, he's a direct descendant of Patrick Henry. He had about 35,000 books in his house, of which many were given away to museums and the, and historical institutions. The balance has been donated to the City of Castle Hills in his name, and, uh, I'm gonna contribute a whole bunch of books to it, too. The mayor says he's going to, too. They're free to take a look at them. There are a zillion paperbacks in the community room, and there are a lot of books here. I hope we can get an enlargement of these books for people to read and enjoy. I know Mr. Butler would be really tickled if that actually was what happened.
Thank you, Douglas, and I wanted to springboard on that and say, uh, this whole idea about this was, was brought to the table by Judy Crawford. Judy, uh, with her little library, and, uh, anybody who knows me is, "Go big or go home." So Judy put the wonderful little, uh, library out there, and it's been getting a lot of use, and then someone, uh, started talking about, i.e. my wife, about how we could get rid of some books. And, uh, then, unfortunately, Mr. Butler died, and then, next thing you know, we have got, I'm not exaggerating when I say thousands, okay? And I would like to, uh, also call attention to Pat. Uh, I mean, what a great guy he was, and when you went in his house, you found, you find out why. I don't think there was a single wall that didn't have a bookshelf on it. So what we're gonna do is, we're getting with, uh, Mr. Trevino, and he is going to find some, some, uh, areas where we actually put professional-looking bookshelves in here and, uh, take these other ones into the, uh, community room over there and find out a way that's gonna be accessed during business hours with a, with a, uh, electronic lock, which I'm gonna donate, okay? Where you can come in, and we're gonna call it the, the Pat Butler Reading Room. Uh, or that's what I suggest, I suppose, I suppose council will have a say in that. But, uh, we will have a place where people can bring books, uh, it's kind of on the honor system, if they steal one, so be it. Uh, we have plenty more where that came from, but, uh, hopefully they'll get educated if they take off with it. But I think it's something that is, is really neat idea. Douglas, actually, we can, we, uh, conspired on that, and, uh, it gives, you know, a place kind of like a, I don't want to go as far as a Starbucks, you know, before we know it, we'll have a cafe in there, that's a joke, and, uh, coffee and things where people can meet during the day, so enough on that. Uh, thank you, Douglas, for, uh, making sure that, that everything worked when it came to, uh, putting things together with Pat's estate. Okay. Um, also, I wanted to talk about the, the mayor's picnic coming up. Uh, it's going to be, uh, uh, this year called the Mayor's Back-to-School Picnic, I understand, and it's gonna be on Saturday, August the 19th, and some of the activities there will be food, uh, from, uh, one of our businesses here in town, a back-to-school safety booth, Captain--